Would you bow your heads with me? Gracious and Almighty God, we gather this evening with grateful hearts, acknowledging your sovereignty over our city, our community, and our lives. We thank you for this city council and for every member who has dedicated themselves to the service and well-being of our residents. We also lift before you all of our city staff, those who labor faithfully, often behind the scenes, to keep our community safe and orderly and thriving. As we enter into these holiday weeks, Lord, we pray especially that the peace of Christ may dwell fully in every heart, in every home, and throughout every department of our city. Let his peace bring calm where there is stress, hope where there is heaviness, and joy where there has been weariness. So we ask all of this in the mighty name of Jesus, and now the blessing, and numbers chapter six is this: May the Lord bless you and keep you; may he turn his face towards you and be gracious; may he give you his peace. Amen.
Councilwoman Ebert with the pledge, please.
Please join me with your hand over your heart. Please stand and join me with your hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now you can sit.
Yeah, gotta love hearing the youth in the audience, yeah. All right, before we get in here and accept the agenda, is there any modifications, changes for the agenda? All right, seeing none, can I get a motion to approve the agenda as is?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as is.
I got a motion, I got a second. Yeah, we're gonna vote unless we need some time. All right, eyes have it so moved. Oh. There we go. Are you a yes?
I'm a yes.
All right, just for the record. All right, eyes have it unanimously so moved, seven zero. With that, the Dustin Pee-wee Tackle Football Champions. All right, I was on my honeymoon getting updates of the game, so congratulations. I was rooting for you from several states away, so that's amazing. All right, tonight we want to introduce you to our Super Bowl-winning 2025 Dustin Dolphin Pee-wee Tackle Football Team. Congratulations. This season, the Pee-wee Dolphins had a record of seven and one in the regular season and finished with the number-two seed in West Division. After beating Freeport in the second round, Shalimar in the third round, they advanced to the Super Bowl and beat Jackson County 19-6. It wasn't even close, they didn't have a chance. The team is head coached by Joe, and now we would like to turn it over to him to introduce all the names, because I definitely don't want to butcher half the team's names. So come on up here, Coach Joe.
Different coach. Joe's not here. So I'm Coach Brandon Knox, just want to thank the parents again for such a special year, all the hard work these kids put in. Appreciate you guys recognizing their accomplishments, because I was told it's been multiple decades since the Dustin team has brought home a Super Bowl-winning trophy. So that's a testament to these kids, and I know that they're proud for the recognition and their ability to get this special coin. So I'm gonna call them up by number and name. Leading us off is Mason Trout, number zero.
Stand up here.
Stand up here. You stand up here. Number one, Carter Herndon. Number two, Jace Edmondson. Number five, Charlie Coe. Number eight, Shane McAlpine. Number 10, Nico Shear. Number 11, one of the most important players on the field, John Robert. Number 12, Ganon Barkus. 13, Henry Phillips. 14, Connor Schinkel. 15, big man on the O-line, Luke Davies. Number 18, Deacon Lansing Byrd. Number double deuce, Bo Roberts. Number 24, Vinnie Fassula. Number 25, Brock Starr. Number 26, Baker Agolu. Number 40, Big Finn Davidson. 44, Bo Knox. 45, Jackson Stokes. 55, Roberto Sierra Ramos. Is that Jack Graham? All right. Number 27, Jack Graham, very instrumental part of our team. And to conclude, we have Jack's Knolls.
All right, do you want to hold over here? Yeah. On the third line.
Shoulder to shoulder, guys.
Stand, get in the mat.
Here, you come here.
Good congratulations. Do you want one? Come on, guys, we have one. Can you get a second one for Joe?
Sir.
Thank you guys for being here. Thank you so much.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll give them just a couple seconds to clear out, and then we'll get into public All right, the noise is calming down a little bit. So with that, we'll continue on to the public comments. If anyone's here and wishes to speak, you have three minutes to do so. I just need your name and address. The only thing we would ask that you not speak on, because we will have their own separate time for public comments, are the public hearings A, B, and C. So outside of that, the floor is yours. Push the button, push that gray button down. There you go, name and address, the floor is yours.
All right, my name's Ricky Lynn Grant, Jr., 175 Main Street, Dustin, Florida, 32541, General Delivery. And I was here, I guess, two weeks ago when we missed you, Mr. Mayor Bobby Wagner, but I had a presentation for the council, Dewey-Dustin, sat right there, so I wish you could've saw it, but I had a bunch of stuff with what I got going on with the license and then getting the broker's license, obviously, after two years. Just trying to make some friends, you know, in the area. I mean, I could live in Athens, Greece, and I wouldn't really know the difference, you know, Kyiv or any coastal town in the world, so I try not to be biased and show bias. I try to just have friends wherever in all kinds of governments and appeal to all people. So Ricky Lynn Grant, Jr., and this is it, but with two minutes left, I've got a lot of advertising that I'm working on, trying to get my website off the ground, www.rickylynngrantjr.com, and then Google Ads, and then, you know, maybe find a wife between all three of my properties. That seems to be the way of the wild out there, is to find a life partner, so I'm trying to keep that lane open and just try to make it out of here alive, you know what I mean? And I like the politics, you know, United States of America, you know, Uncle Sam, and I try to just stick with the real estate, the Florida Real Estate Commission, but, you know, I come to these meetings because I like having friends, and it's a nice platform. So I just try to stay positive until it closes the deal. It's kind of different being an entrepreneur in America, so I try to be nice to everybody. I don't need any money, but I know how to do the deal, got a college education. Looking forward to maybe a commercial space on the bay and do some fishing, a $20 million boat, maybe, kind of industrial, agricultural, commercial, maybe, 20 million on the boat. I talked to Galati. I don't know, I gotta make some more friends with the dealers, I guess, maybe, maybe a bigger market like Miami, maybe some type of fishing boat, maybe could cast the big nets, you know, cast the nets on the other side, this big, I guess, the church, whatever, the Jesus Christ or whatever, caster nets on the other side, and pour in a net of fish so big that it weighed the boat down, so maybe I can cast my nets and pull in so much fish that the boat will start to sink. Other than that, I got my farm, $100 million farm, and my coastal front beach house at a price of $6, $7 million with a conventional loan, I guess that's almost $2 million cash. So I got a lot of work to do, but I enjoy the meetings, I enjoy being here, and maybe, you know, maybe have something to talk about next time.
All right. Thank you, Ricky. Thanks for being here. All right, anyone else? Name and address, and the floor is yours.
Thank you. I am Michael Leach, I live at 793 Pine Street, and I just went to a planning meeting today. I was very interested in the idea that we talked about two years ago in May 2023, that to keep Pine Street from coming through-street. I learned at the meeting today with Jesse that you guys have it NC-1 and plan to make it a through-street. So it's gonna go from Calhoun through Cyber and through my street, which will end at Stallman. So basically, it's not a through-street. There's no connectivity, other than whatever they publish in the directions. So they'll say, turn down Pine Street. So you turn down Pine Street, then they're gonna say, make a left-hand turn. It's gonna go to Stallman, gonna get to Kelly, which we already know is the backup point. Goes to Calhoun, Cyber, to Kelly, and that traffic's gonna be backed up, now it's gonna be backed up in front of my house. And I was shocked. I thought when we had that meeting before, there were four streets that you guys said would not be opened, and Pine Street was one of them. And I made a letter to you saying, okay, now that Pine Street's not gonna be open, we want to wish, want to complete it to be a cul-de-sac with Blue Mountain Court. With the street going through, of course, they're not gonna do that, it's gonna remain Pine Street. And I think it's important to know that we should have gotten verification, or further verification, that the street was gonna be open. And I don't know who voted for that, but I'll find out. And we need to make sure we get this so it becomes a cul-de-sac, and we need to have the planning commission be able to take that off the list. And just for information, just that one segmented road, by the way, you gotta get through Boudreaux's house as well, which is one house over, the plan, just for that, and this is estimate, I'm sure, $743,000. I can guarantee you, we'll go over $1 million before you get done. And that's, I mean, I don't think it's worth $1 million, God bless you, I don't think it's worth $1 million to put that little segment in, so.
To recap, they said no to the name change because of that?
No, not yet. We're still, we're still talking, but what I did was ask about when the meeting was, and he said it tonight.
Yep.
All right, and I'll come back for the last three minutes later on.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yep. All right, anyone else? All right, seeing none. Dr. T, could you hit the button? Thank you. All right, with that, we'll close public comments and get to the consent agenda. Do I hear a motion?
Make a motion to approve consent.
I have a motion with a second. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
All right, with a motion and second, I'll call the vote for the consent agenda, A Eyes have it seven zero, so moved. City managers support.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, welcome back, council. First item is 4A is regarding a six-month extension to the Tyler Technology contract. As you're aware, we've been working to transition from Tyler to UKG and Clarion and MGO for permitting, Clarion for financial, and UKG for HR payroll. All of those functions are currently, or have been housed in the Tyler Technology platform, and we were hoping to have the ability to move completely away from that by now, but a couple of things have come to light of late, primarily an active IRS audit of our payroll functions that is in Munis, which is part of the Tyler Technology, that the static data that we could pull out is somewhat insufficient to keep that IRS audit moving and being able to get them the information they need timely. Also, their unfinished development and code cases in Intergov, and then getting the Intergov transition over to MGO is taking some more time, and we want to be sure we protect our public record, so it's a recommendation of our IT director and staff that we would extend this another six months, recognizing that there's a lot to be done, and we're certainly gonna work to make sure we don't need to do this again, but we have money in the budget to do it, so it wouldn't require a budget amendment, so we would ask you to consider that this evening.
All right, Councilman Bagby.
I move to approve a six-month extension of the Tyler Technology software as a service contract in the amount of $46,804.54, as outlined in the attached amendment.
I'll second that.
Motion and second, any further discussion on IT extension? All right, seeing none, we'll call the vote. All right, eyes have it seven zero, so moved.
Thank you. Next item is 4B is regarding the discussion we had at the last meeting regarding the CRA Advisory Committee and the recommendations coming from the two CRA Advisory Committees, Harbor and the Town Center. So we were, it was brought to our attention that there may be a backlog of requests coming from those advisory committees, so we wanted to go take a look at that. And part of last week, our last meeting's discussion was that those items should be vetted through the CRA Board prior to coming to city council. So in looking at what's out there that has been requested to move forward, from the Harbor CRA, if you recall at the last meeting, there was a discussion regarding the phasing of the utility undergrounding projects. There's also a request to install a breakwater at Clement Taylor Park to explore funding options with the Tourist Development Council to repair and improve the Harbor One property seawall, to develop a used oil collection partnership with businesses that accept used oil, and to appoint John Stevens and Guy Tadlock to the Dustin Bridge Committee. And currently, we're not aware of any backlog from the Town Center CRA. So what we would like to suggest tonight is that we schedule a CRA board meeting either at the next meeting, prior to your next council meeting, or the first meeting in January to address these items and to make sure there's some clarity as to what the CRA, Harbor CRA Advisory Committee is requesting, and whether it'll be funded through Harbor CRA funds, whether they're looking for funds from city council. But probably what would come from that is some direction back to them to bring a more defined request, so that the CRA Board can know what to recommend to the city council. But until we get them before the CRA Board in that format, we may not know the best answers for those. So we would suggest that we schedule a meeting, and we'll do that absent your opposition, but with some recommendations, whether to do it in the next meeting this month or the first meeting in January. And then beyond that, and then ask the CRA Board to bring those things that have been listed or any other backlog they have identified for your consideration as the CRA Board, and then move to the city council. In addition to that, we would recommend that moving forward, that the first meeting of each quarter of the council meeting, that we schedule a standing CRA Board Committee, Board Meeting, and if these, either the Town Center or the Harbor CRA have initiatives they'd like to bring forward, they'll know what that timeframe looks like, and they can make plan accordingly. And if there's nothing, we won't have a meeting, but we'll at least have one scheduled and in place if we need it. So absent further direction, just whether you'd rather have a meeting the 16th or the first meeting in January, whatever day that may fall on. And subject to your questions.
Well, since I'm not on the CRA Board, I will butt out, but I'd be able to make it in January.
As president of the CRA Board, if we have it, we could do it at the next meeting at 5:30, if you want me to make a motion to that effect.
That will be fine.
I'll make a motion that we have the CRA Board meeting, next meeting at 5:30.
I'll second that.
Okay.
It's December 16th, our next meeting.
All right, I got a motion and second for a CRA Board meeting. Any further discussion? Yep, Councilman Bagby.
Yeah, because he asked for guidance. The main thing I want to hear from the CRA Board, and I know John's here, is the pay. A couple of the things don't require pay, you know, putting you and Guy on the bridge authority or whatever, but are you proposing to use CRA money? Are you proposing to just use general revenue? I don't need to know tonight, CRA meeting, I don't want to get, but how you want to pay for it, number one. Number two, what the priorities are, okay? Because if you want to breakwater and you want to, you know, this and that and another thing, all of a sudden, now we're into real money. So what's your priority? What do you want us to do first? What's most important? And hopefully, I don't know, when is the next Harbor CRA Advisory Committee meeting?
Next Wednesday.
Okay, so it will be before the next, I just want to make sure that, you know, and then I wanted, I would like for y'all to speak on the individual items that you want the CRA Board to forward to the city council, as per why it's the most efficient use of either your funds or our funds. A couple of those, like I said, putting y'all on a board, asking our TDC representative to go to the TDC and ask for money to help with something, those are easy, we can do that. I'm more concerned about what you're asking us to spend stuff on. Thank you.
All right, Councilwoman Trammell?
Yeah, I was gonna add to that. I think I was on the board when these came up, so I know the background story of this, but the background story's never been included, ever, and it needs to be at the next board meeting, the CRA Board meeting. We need to have the backstory. Why did this come about? Why does it needed? I know one of the things was the depositing the oil, and that was brought up by boat captains who use like, I don't know, 20 or 30 gallons of oil versus a quart that we use in our car, and there's not a facility. Well, that's a private business that's asking for something. You know, as legislation, I say, well, maybe we can find them some land. Do you know of any land? Do you know where we could put it? Do you know the laws regarding disposable oil and disposing of oil? Those kinds of things need to be included in whatever it is you want us to do. So that was just a suggestion for you.
Can you be at the next meeting, so that that's brought up before it comes to us?
What, can I be at the next meeting?
Next Wednesday's meeting for that background?
Yeah, I don't mind, yes, I can be at Wednesday's meeting. I think that's fine. I was gonna suggest maybe, since it's real easy, that we have Mr. Stevens and Guy Tadlock already nominated to go to the Bridge Committee, and that way we don't have to use that, use our board meeting up for that. Does that, do I need to make that a motion?
After this motion.
Yes, okay, I'll do that. Thank you.
All right, and any, so Councilman Dustin.
Thank you, Mayor. I just comment on the oil disposal. When we started out, the city was in charge of making someplace available to dispose of the oil, because in the absence of that, oil got disposed in places where it ought not have been disposed. We did that at the fishing fleet for quite a long time, and then we went into an agreement with the quick oil change on Mountain Drive, and then when they closed, that was the end of that. So we do need to go forward to have someplace, and it's not just for charter boats, it's for anybody that has a vessel in Dustin, and there are hundreds and hundreds of them, and we don't want them throwing that oil, like I say, where it ought not to be, so that's one that we can go forward with, and it's not that expensive. I think we paid the quick change oil place by the gallon, and it really was not expensive. So that's one we do need to work out, otherwise we get oil in places that doesn't need to be.
Yeah, yeah. All right, with that, I got no one else on the board for this motion, so I'll call.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Just to inquire, Mr. Stevens, does that give you guys, the 16th meeting, enough time to meet next Wednesday and then be prepared for that meeting on the 16th?
Yeah, just come on.
Just a thought to make sure they do have time to be ready.
John Stevens, chairman of the Harbor CRA, I won't be at the next meeting, so we'll have to have the vice chair be there, unless you guys want to push it to January.
But you can get that information to them, right?
Yes.
Yeah, that'd be ideal, keep us going, offseason.
Is everybody gonna be here on the 16th? At times, we, we're not sure. I'm not sure.
I am handcuffed to the house, I've left for long enough, I don't want to go anywhere.
Would it be better to put it off for the first meeting in January?
And that's up for you guys, if you guys know what your schedules are looking like.
I'm gonna make the substitute, put it off for the first meeting in January, that gives us more time, and then more time.
Okay. All right, so I do have a substitute motion to push to January.
Second.
Got a second, and any further discussions on the second?
When is the first meeting in January? Is that the 16th?
No. January 5th. It's the first Monday in January.
Okay.
Okay, so it's only two weeks. Okay.
So I've got no problem with that move.
All right, so we are going to adopt the substitute. I see no other discussion, so we will vote on pushing this to the first in January, first week of January, January 5th. All right, eyes have it so moved, seven zero, and Councilwoman Trammell? Yep, no worries.
I would just like to make the motion that we go ahead and appoint John Stevens and Guy Tadlock to the Bridge Committee.
I'll second that.
All right. Just for, yeah, for vote, do we need, is there one per person, like our other committees, or are we just filling it out? I wasn't right up on this.
It's just two from each board, and they It's just two from each board, and they selected from themselves.
All right, thank you for the clarification. All right, with that, I'll, yep, we'll call the vote. Do we have our second?
I did.
You second, all right, thank you. All right, we'll call the vote on the two nominations to the bridge committee. All right, eyes have it, so moved, and with that, just going to jump in a little bit with that, kind of as a tale to that, Rodney Chamberlain, who a lot of us know already, just got appointed to FDOT's District Three Director position. So me and him spoke at the last TPO meeting last week. So he's very interested in meeting our bridge aesthetics committee, as well as he informed me, and I'd like staff to please verify that the permits for the underpass under the bridge, to his knowledge, at least for his district or his department, have been approved. So if we guys haven't had that notification yet, if you guys would please reach out to them at D3 and just make sure that's all there for the CRA Harbor, so that for these discussions and everything, whether it's the breakwater, that we just know exactly what the current makeup is for where the project stands from the permitting side. So that was just a little quick TPO intermission there. All right.
Thank you.
City manager.
Next item for C is regarding the FY 2026 budget amendment to fund the FRS plan that we passed two meetings ago, our last meeting perhaps. Anyway, the, we were asked to bring back a budget amendment to fund that program not to exceed $532,570, and that's before you for your consideration.
All right, with that, Councilman Bagby.
Mayor, I move to amend the FY 2026 budget to increase personnel taxes and benefits by $532,570, an amount not to exceed $532,570.
All right, and I have Councilwoman Abert with the second, is that correct?
Right.
All right, with that, any discussion? All right, seeing none, we'll call the vote. All right, eyes have it, so moved, six one. All right.
Thank you.
Boss Man Jones.
Next item is 4D, asking you to consider a letter opposing the oil drilling and energy exploration in the eastern Gulf of Mexico, Gulf of America, as the case may be. This was, you have a letter in your packet that the Oklahoma County Board of County Commissioners approved at their November 18th meeting, supporting a permanent protection of the Eastern Gulf Test and Training Range, which may be known as the Eglin Gulf Test and Training Range, and to protect it from oil drilling and energy exploration. This was brought to the BCC's attention by the Oklahoma County Economic Development Council, and subsequent to that, they made the request that the city of Destin also support a similar letter. And if you support that, we will draft one similar to what the county drafted from the mayor's signature.
All right, with that, Councilwoman Trammell.
Thank you, Mayor. I move that the council approve the issuance of the letter of support and authorize the mayor to sign and execute the letter on behalf of the city.
All right.
Second.
Got a motion and second. Councilman Destin, discussion?
Thank you, Mayor. And while I wholeheartedly support the theme of this letter, that we support our military activities, it's also very important to me that we make it clear that the things that make Destin, Destin and the Gulf Coast, the water and the beaches be protected, and that they are vital and are in fact a national treasure. And if we could incorporate that into the letter, Ms. Kopp, can you put some whereas in there?
Sure, be happy to.
During the, during the comment period, are we still in the 30-day comment period? If we are, then we need to try to get it done before that is over.
Absolutely.
All right, and motion maker, second, are we okay with the amend?
Absolutely.
All right, so those are added. All right, with that, seeing no further discussion, we'll call the vote. All right, eyes have it, so moved, seven zero. I agree, between military and our beaches, we have nothing. All right, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you. Next item is regarding the annexation timeline and the efforts that this city's moving forward with potential annexation of some of those areas to our east. What you have in your packet is a list of 15 date points that some of them are more static than others. For instance, the, obviously, the election day, November the 3rd, that's not going to change. The day that supervisor elections, August 14th, has to have ballot language is not going to change. So in order to get to where we are today, we kind of reverse engineered from those dates back. Back in July of last year of 2024, council said move forward with a survey of those areas that may potentially be annexed into the city to kind of get a feel of the interest and what would bring their interest to a level that they would say we want to be part of the city. So the next step would be to do that survey. So we've talked internally about how we would accomplish that, and we think probably the best mechanism would be to do a fact sheet with information about the potential benefits of annexation into the city. And, and then to each of the geographical areas, and we've come up with some boundaries, Kelly Plantation, Regatta Bay, whatever they may be, and send to each of those a very similar list of facts, but with a QR code that they would go to to cast a ballot, for lack of a better term, but just say, yeah, we think this is a good idea, no. But doing that would allow us to capture those in a common geographic boundary, so we would know from Kelly Plantation what percentage thought that it would be good to move into the city and whatnot. Same with the other areas. So that's kind of where we are. We're looking for any direction, if you would like to see that done another way, but we've got about 60 days to get that done, so we would do that through a direct mail piece, and then with a QR code that would say, here's where you go, cast your ballot. And then when we have that data aggregated, we'd bring it back to you and say, this is what it's looking like. And then before we move forward and start spending money on surveys and those type things, we'd know what the appetite may be to move forward.
Yep, okay, Councilman Schmidt and then Abert.
Yeah, one thought to consider, direct mail is fine, I guess, but what if we utilize their HOA capabilities and also on top of that, use them to send it out electronically and whatever methods that they have?
We'd absolutely look forward to any way of getting the information to them.
I like that. Councilman Destin?
Are we going to do the survey in-house, or are we going to hire somebody professional to make it for us?
We've talked about doing it internally, and I think with our IT staff, we can create the QR codes and just make sure we get the right information out to them, being careful not to cross statutes of, of putting forth information as opposed to taking a position. Thanks.
Okay, Councilwoman Abert?
I'm just curious, I thought we had already started this survey months ago. Is that, I mean, what?
We have not, ma'am.
Okay, yep. And we talked about this, I think if we can use this survey one to gauge if there's just a complete holdout from somewhere, fine, fair enough. But from what I've heard, I think the second step would be really honing in from whether they have a true HOA or just that community, if you look on the map, they all kind of have their own little cluster of seeing what their needs and wants are, and really understanding how we can use a fact sheet to show, hey, here's what we done. I think one of the, my favorite thing to share, especially with the Kelly and Regatta groups, is what we're doing with Four Prong Lake. I think that's just a great, this is what we can do for a gated community for an issue that takes all levels of government, and to have a local representation to really make sure that they're represented and kickstarted and funded at the state level down, to me really shows the best foot of what we can represent. And then the second thing that seems to really sparks people's eyes, because at the end of the day, we're taxing, their taxes are going up. So my fear is that if we just ask a yes/no question, do you want your taxes to go up? I mean, I know how I'm voting, and I'm the one almost spearheading this thing. However, once you show them how physically conservative and responsible we are, and I say that by saying every dollar that we get from our residents, we find three to five that year elsewhere, and so it's a multiplier, and showing how we can grow together with it, I think really brings people back to a couple hundred dollars, turns into several thousand, and you multiply that out by 5,500 registered voters in this unincorporated area, and now you're really starting to talk about, not necessarily what we can change tomorrow, but what we can change in five, 10, 15 years as a community. So I'm excited to see how the survey goes, and that's kind of where our heads have been at, trying to think on what the survey should say, do, and represent. So with that, Councilman Bagby?
Yeah, my only concern on, I'd love to use the HOAs on the follow-up if we have meetings, if we think we need to go pitch, you know, it's close, it seems to be, on the initial questioning or on the initial survey, I'd like for us, either professionally or internally, to control that questioning, because if we send it to these various HOAs, then you're dependent upon a manager and a board who will then put, apply their spin to what they think they, their people want to hear, you know, do you want your taxes to go up? Or do you want, you know, to get a free pass to Henderson Beach State Park for the beach? And I want us to control, be in control of that messaging. I want our messaging to be accurate, but I don't want it to be spun or tainted by a board or a manager that may or may not support what we're trying to find out. So initially, I would like to see us professionally or internally send it directly to those people, and then work through the HOAs to facilitate meetings with their members or whatever to answer questions or to provide additional information on what we mail to them.
Great. Councilman Gill?
I have a crazy question. Out of the funding that we get, how much, or do we have a dollar amount or an idea of what we would obtain if we included or incorporated Kelly Plantation from TDC, bed tax, gas tax, whatever it is, whichever ones are population-based, population-driven?
Well, they're going to be on Avalon based, and it would be our, you know, our billage rate 1.6 and change, but I don't know what the assessed value is. We asked that question earlier, but we've not got that information yet, but that is something we'd like to know.
So we've asked TDC to come here several times. I know we have a TDC representative. I'm hoping our TDC legislative representative has enough power to get at least one member of the TDC here to ask us, or be able to answer some questions for us, please.
Does that have to do with TDC?
Well, I got some questions for TDC anyway.
The only number that I know of Kelly is that there's about 1,100 voters from the last election. Whether they voted or not, there's about 1,100 voters there in Kelly. That doesn't answer the monetary stuff, but that's kind of at least the multiplier that you're thinking of. All right, Councilman Destin?
Yeah, I'm a little uncomfortable not having a professional come up with a survey for us, because we're only going to get one shot at this. If it fails, then it won't be happening again for 10 years probably. City manager, is it possible to get some kind of an estimate of what some professional surveyors could, would charge us?
Yes, sir.
What, what gives you peace of mind between in-house and professional? What's, what kind of gives you the peace of mind gap?
Well, professionals are professionals, they do it for a living. And like I say, if we don't do it right, it won't come back again for a long time.
Correct, yeah.
You know, I'll make a motion if necessary, otherwise, can you get us an estimate of what it would take to professional survey, to get a professional group that does surveys to try to make up a survey for us and administer it?
Yes, sir.
Could that come with a not to exceed limit if we're not going to have a meeting? If we're really kind of pushing to January, I'd hate to have this on the first week of January.
We have our first meeting in January the 5th, and this issue will come up again.
Okay, I'm just giving it as much time as possible to get this out.
Well, we have another meeting in December.
Yeah, is it possible to get it to us in December, you think, just an estimate?
I would think so, yes.
Very good, I won't make a motion if you can carry that forward.
Okay.
Just to give us an idea what it might cost to have it done professionally.
All right, Councilwoman Abert?
That was my question, we have 60 days, we can't drag this out, we need to find out, get back to us, let us know, so in January we can make a vote and get it started.
Yeah, just to your earlier comment, I was hoping this was going to start six months ago as well. With that.
I thought it was supposed to start a year.
I have email threads, I've tried. With that, okay, regardless of the professional or in-house, that's fine. Anything in particular, I know at the end of the day, we're looking for, we're kind of looking for some indicators that we're not wasting our time and money, just while we're here, so I can't talk to you guys after really, is there really anything particular threshold-wise that you guys are looking for? Or, because I know there's going to be the initial, and then as we door knock or host these HOA kind of get togethers, I think as people learn more, they would understand more, and then that's kind of where you'll get people who want to help the community, who want their benefits, and those who, you know, a dollar up is a dollar no for me. So if there's anything else in particular, we just, I'd like to hear them. Councilman Schmidt?
Yeah, just a couple thoughts. I respect to Mr. Destin, but I can't support putting off that more time right now. I think between the mayor, Dr. Tamra, and everybody else, I think they can come up with a pretty professional survey. I mean, we did a Survey Monkey to the staff for an HR benefit, it's costing the city half a million dollars, you know? And I think we can go, I think these people are capable to just do that sooner, just to get it out there. More time the better. I think it's not, it's not a drastic ask, I believe, we've already given you the power to do a lot of this stuff, haven't we?
As far as non-representative or representative, yes.
I'd prefer just to have you work with Tamra and Larry and get the basic, here's the, you know, y'all know the information, and let's, don't spend money on a professional survey. I just, we're just wasting two, three, four weeks, in my opinion.
Yep.
For something that might not even happen.
Yep, Councilman Bagby?
Yeah, and I understand Councilman Schmidt's concern and your concern, Mayor, about let's get it out. I would remind everybody a couple of things. Number one, we're in the holiday season, I've got something every night this week, as I'm sure most of you do. I have something almost every night next week, on the 13th, we have the parade, the Christmas party, the Army Navy game, and the PPG. So I have four things that day besides those. So my concern, one of my concerns, is people's ability in these areas to focus on this question. Yeah, I got it, okay, I also got to go buy all my Christmas presents, I got to do all my wrapping, I got to go to all these events, Christmas tree lighting on Thursday, the, you know, everything that's going on. So I'm not as worried that we push it to, really to after New Year's Day, when people get back and they get back into the school mode, you're going to have a lot of people go out of town over the holidays. So I'm not sure we would get a good sampling of what we needed. Number two, I probably share Mr. Destin's concern about having participated and been the target of push polls. You know, you, sometimes these polls inadvertently, you get the answer you kind of.
Are looking for.
Looking for, or the answer you're not looking for based on the question or the way you ask the question. Again, I want us to be totally transparent about, you know, here's what we're asking you to do, here's the cost, here's the benefit. So I may share a little bit of Mr. Destin, who's probably seen a lot more push polls than I have, pushing people to answer in a certain way. I don't think it costs us anything to see how much it would cost a professional to work this up, because I do agree, this, we're going to get one shot at this, and if we mess this up.
Statute of law, we have to wait.
Yeah, inadvertently, if we mess this, even though we went in with the best intentions, because you ask for a, you know, I want 40%. I mean, if we're, if we're at 20%, I'm kind of, don't waste, it doesn't matter how hard you sell, you can go to, not door to door, you're not going to get 20% to 50%. So I'm kind of supporting the motion, I guess. of supporting the motion, I guess, as, as made, and I don't see the extra two weeks costing us anything. We'll be asking somebody, the staff or a professional, to develop this poll over the two weeks that are left in the month, and then put it out on January third, or whatever that Monday is, and say you got twenty days to answer this type of thing, you know? But that's just me.
Yeah. Councilman Destin.
My intention is not to put off. My intention is to make sure that we don't screw up, and I guess experience helps me in analyzing that.
Absolutely.
School district tried to do a half-cent sales tax a long time ago, didn't have professional, didn't do a real professional job, was voted down resoundingly. It was eight years later that we brought it back up and did a better job, and it passed. So I don't want us to go down that route, so I will make that in the form of a motion.
All right.
That we direct the city manager to come back with an estimate only of what we can, what it would cost to have a professional group to our survey and administer it.
All right. Got a motion and second. We'll continue the sessions with Councilman Schmidt.
Yeah, that sounds good. I guess just clear, I was, one more clarification, that I was concerned that in January third, we're going to be presented with an estimate, and then on January third, they're going to leave here and start making a survey, and then January twentieth, it's going to go out, you know? So I was, I'm worried about that. But is there anything holding you back from also generating something, so we can see options? Is that allowed to be done simultaneously? So that way, we're, we are prepared to not delay anything?
That's not part of the motion, but I think it would be a duplication of efforts. And if we, you know, it's not my, not my intent to put it off. It's my intent to make sure it's done right.
Sure.
And if it actually were to be put off for a couple of weeks, and we get a professional job, you know, why are we in such a rush to fail?
Yeah.
Let's do it right.
We've been waiting a year. What's two more weeks, right? So it's perfect. Sounds good.
Councilman Gill.
Thank you. I spoke to the professional, Ms. Crystal over there, and she gave me some information that I was actually asking about. So, in addition to Avalon, if we annexed in, we would get more state shared revenue from gas tax.
Population-based.
Population-based. That's what I was trying to ask a second. Additionally, the bed tax from the annexed hotels, along with the sales tax, would give us additional four million dollars. Crystal, is that accurate, what, what I'm saying up here right now?
You're correct. It would increase the population-based shared revenues from the state, which includes sales tax, municipal shared revenues, a gas tax one, gas tax two, so it would increase a lot at that level. Right now, they bring in about four million a year. This would increase it, depending on how many of these neighborhoods and how many are year-round residents. It should increase it, I'd guess, ten to somewhere between ten and fifteen percent year-over-year.
Ten, and, okay, wonderful. And as far as annexing in Kelly Plantation and other places, with, as long as we don't take on their stormwater issues, we could potentially see a benefit, but if we have to take on their stormwater issues, it's probably going to be a nil. It's going to be a cut-for-cut deal.
It would, a lot of these...
It just gives us a bigger voice.
HOAs will, they, they have indicated that they'd prefer to maintain their own internal infrastructure themselves. We wouldn't have to take a lot of that internal infrastructure over. It, it depends neighborhood by neighborhood. It's all different. Past calculations I've done, would all come out kind of even-steven, but we would definitely benefit from a greater population when it comes to state and federal-level items.
Wonderful. Thank you so much for helping me elaborate on my original question. You are amazing, Crystal.
Awesome. All right. And in all fairness, I definitely don't mind waiting, because there's plenty of things that we can still do as a grassroots movement for this, even today with the linear trail. It's amazing what happens when you have a local neighborhood couple get on board, and then they go to their neighbors versus the government come knocking on your door, telling them that they're here to help versus, hey, no, we've, we've heard them out. This is actually pretty cool. Next thing you know, they all line up and, and we're pretty excited about their willingness to sign easement. So even today, I kind of saw that firsthand of, you get some community leaders, the buy-in, they help share the information of the pros and cons, and it, it seems to be received a lot better when your neighbor tells you one way or another versus the government. So I think, regardless, there's still things we'll be doing, and so waiting a couple of weeks for a survey, or a potential survey, I think there's, there's plenty of other things that we can be doing, so I don't feel like we're, we're dragging behind in any way. So that would be my last comments on that. All right, anything else? Annexation? All right, seeing none. I got a motion and second. We'll call the vote on getting an estimate survey first meeting in January. Eyes Have It So Moved, seven-zero, and we will move it right back. Mr. Bossman Jones.
Thank you. Item four F is regarding a First Amendment to the Four-Prong Lake Interlocal Agreement with local county. Good news from the county, they have agreed to contribute one million dollars of surtax funds to this project. So your action denied being requested is to amend our interlocal agreement with them to accept their million dollars.
All right. Councilman Bagby, do you want to do the honors?
I do. Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, I move that council approved the First Amendment to the interlocal agreement from the county and direct the mayor to execute.
I'll second that.
All right, motion and second. Just thoughts, if we have any numbers off the top of our head. What was the cost of the total project? Estimates?
We don't know. That's a good question. Jeff, what's today's estimates?
Ballpark of just kind of the big bite.
The ballpark number that I've been given is somewhere in the five-million-dollar range. If we have Geotek done, we'll get a better, closer estimate. That'll depend on what Geotek finds as to what type of materials are required to be used.
Nice. And now we have state appropriation funds. We're looking at Water District and FDOT. We now got the county on board. Like, I mean, for, for the gated communities, guys out there, I will happily go one-on-one, but I mean, you can't get a better example of what cities can do for a community, even if it's a completely private gated community, and there's still issues internally. So that's all I got.
And I do want to thank the Board of County Commissioners, and specifically Commissioner Drew Palmer.
Yep, thank you.
Who made this million dollars a reality. Of course, I continue to thank State Representative Pat Maney, who made that million dollars, and we've asked him for a little more this coming session. And he is a great guy, and I'm sure he's going to help us.
Awesome. Thank you for that. Councilman Gill.
So you, you mentioned a name there that has concern. There's no ties attached to this million dollars, right? We didn't make any promises or anything like that?
No.
Okay, wonderful.
All right. With that, I will call the vote. All right, Eyes Have It unanimously So Moved. Thank you, everyone, for their partnership up and down the government ladder. Dr. T, or you got anything else?
I just remind you that the fifteenth is the Legislative Delegation Meeting in Shalimar, and that's a Monday night, so our move, our meeting was moved to Tuesday, the sixteenth.
Awesome. I appreciate that. My wife's birthday is on the fifteenth, so I was going to have to skip that. All right.
All right. Wanted to say thank you to Katie Birmingham from Senator Scott's office, and also Duncan Morrison, who is a U.S. Coast Guard Fellow. They have been really helpful in working with us on the navigational issues out at East Pass and West Jetty. We have our city's annual tree lighting this Thursday at 6:00 PM at the Community Center, and our Christmas parade will be Saturday, December thirteenth at 10:00 AM. Floats will start at Destin Methodist Church on Beach Drive. And a reminder to everyone planning to come out and watch, to please stand on the north side of Harbor Boulevard in ninety-eight, please. Sunday, December fourteenth, we have the Holly Jolly at the Harbor. There will be market activities from 11:00 AM to 5:00 PM, and we have specifics on our website under News and Information about what is taking place then. And then that evening, the Destin Museum is doing the Boat Parade, and that's at six o'clock. And that's it.
I wanted to find out, Lisa, you've got a lot of great programs that are going on during the month of December. There was a couple, the Painting at the Park on December sixth at 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM, and then you've also got in Friday, December twelfth, Christmas Kids Night Out. Can you talk a little bit about that? These are things that your, your group has set up to help families through the month of December. Can you elaborate? There's three or four items that you've put out, correct?
Yes. Well, we've got Dance Camp. We have all this online, and also call the Community Center for any more information, but we do have the Painting at the Park at Royal Melbourne, which has been very fun. We just finished the holiday baking. You're getting me to think, what else? Of course, we've got basketball going on, and what else did you just say?
Well, I was going to ask you, you've got the Painting at the Park, but you've also got the Christmas Kids Night Out, and I'm wondering, is that really for parents to be able to do some shopping while we take care of their kids, right?
Yes, it is. Yes. Kids Night Out, drop your children. We feed them, we play with them, and they get to go shopping. All of this is available. People want to just look at the Community Center, or they can even call the Community Center to get specifics, but it's pretty inexpensive for residents to drop their kids off.
You bet.
Right. Thank you, Lisa. Those are great programs.
Yeah.
And I'll be judging the Boat Parade, Tamra, so I hope you come up there and sit next to me.
I'm joining the Boat Parade for the first time, so...
Are you? Good.
No special treatment, please, on the voting. All right, with that, announcements are over. We're going to go into the public hearing. Honestly, how does this work again? Do I kick it to you?
You've been gone for too long, Mayor.
I, I barely remember the street names.
Yeah, you can kick it to me. So this is item five A. It is a public quasi-judicial hearing. Choctaw Engineering, on behalf of Drury Destin LLC, is requesting approval of a major development order application to construct a hotel and conference center. The proposed plan includes three-hundred-and-twenty hotel units, approximately four-thousand square feet of conference space, outdoor pool, parking area, stormwater improvements, and associated pedestrian infrastructure. Before we hear from staff and the applicant, who are here tonight, a couple of items just for the legal process and the code requirements. First is, we're going to enter into the record the city's staff report and all twenty-two attachments, which are listed as A through V in the staff report. Does the applicant have any objection? Okay. The other thing is that the code requires that the entire application and notices be read into the record unless the applicant and the city agree to waive that. Does the applicant have any objection to waiving the reading of, of those items?
No.
Okay. Thank you, then. Thank you. Then with that, we will turn it over to planning staff to give you an introduction, and then turn it over to the applicant.
Okay. As already stated, this is for the Drury-Destin Hotel. This is Choctaw Engineering on behalf of Drury-Destin. This will be a two-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand-six-hundred-and-fifteen-foot, square-foot hotel space with four-thousand square feet of conference space. This entire project has undergone technical review as required by Conference of Plan and Land Development Code, and it meets all minimum requirements. Eddie Robinson from Drury and Mark Siner, the project engineer, are both here if there are any questions specifically for the applicant.
All right. Thank you so much. You guys want to...
Does the applicant wish to speak and make any presentation?
I'm ready for that.
Okay.
All right, with that...
Council, do you have any questions before you open it up for a public hearing?
Okay. Councilwoman Trammell, any questions before the comments?
No, I can ask my questions during the public hearing.
All right, thank you. All right, with that, if anyone's here and wishes to speak on this, this is your time to do so. All right, seeing a couple no's. All right, I'll close the public comments for public hearing A, and we'll get into the council. Councilwoman Trammell up first.
Yes, I have a question for the Drury representative. If you want to come up there so you can answer. Not the engineer.
Just hit that gray button. The light will turn on, and that way, the mic's on. There you go.
I was looking at what you provided us, and I understand they're not complete drawings. I get that all in, but I did not see an area for dog walking, and that's identified on your property. And we are seeing more and more animals coming with people, service animals. They can be bunnies or goats. We had a goat here one time. But, but there's no provisions within what I saw on that for them to have an area to have animal relief. I'll put it that way. And I don't want the city to be put in a situation where we're scooping poop.
I don't know that that's part of the civil plan, but we are currently in for building permit as well, and typically, that is the requirement that we have, a standard that we have for our own hotels. So that will definitely be part of the plan.
Okay, designated area and with the doggy bags.
Correct.
Okay. All right, thank you so much. That was my question.
All right, Councilwoman Abar.
So I've, I've been to the Drury up in Nashville, right there off of I-65. Is it pretty much the same layout and design as that hotel?
Did you go to the one downtown, or the...
The one on the interstate, right off the interstate.
It's going to be something similar to that, yep.
Okay, great. It's, it's a nice...
Our typical prototype right now is seven stories with a hundred-and-eighty-six rooms. So this is a little different. Here, we were only able to go to the six stories, and here, we felt like we needed more rooms, so this is six stories, three-hundred-and-twenty rooms.
I was going to say, it's very nice. I've been to the one at conferences as well as the one there off of 65, so glad to have you building here in our city and in that area. I think it'll go well. I think this is going to, it's going to serve a lot of purpose. Thank you.
Thank you.
In our discussions with staff today, a few things that I kind of raised, one, a very simple one, hopefully you guys can accommodate, because I think we never spoke individually, but through staff, I was told that we'd have a lot more like the Disney Springs Hotel aesthetics. I've heard that that's not the case now. But some of the things that I would like to ask, and it'd be a willing ask, because I know you guys have your minimum requirements, the trees that you're required, if they could be native and not palms, that would be a huge help to all of us for the environment and for aesthetics and for the heat. So I don't know if that's something you guys are interested in, but I would like to see that written into the building permit with you guys, kind of voluntarily hopping onto that. I don't know if you have any comments right now, or if you'd like to speak to staff more into that, but that's kind of where I'm coming from.
I'll, I'll have a conversation with, with staff and with our own internal group, but we're definitely, you know, are going to be around for the next thirty, forty years. So we want to be good neighbors, and if that's part of being good neighbors, we'll definitely take a good look at that.
I, I can assure you, I mean, I know a lot of people are not in my backyard, but I think not having the palm trees would go a long way of letting people know that you're not from out of town. I'll put it that way. The other one was from traffic in ninety-eight. We got read in that it's going to be a right-out, but the left-hand turn-in is still there. I don't know if that's going to be to you, David, or to you about closing the median. We already got one median getting closed in unincorporated area, and that seems to be a safety and efficiency mechanism. So I didn't know, one, if you guys have anything else further that you could add, or what that would look like from traffic, the ingress and egress of, of the hotel, being that that's going to be an uncontrolled intersection.
Can we hear from the city engineer on that first?
So, so currently, how, how they have it designed is, it is a full access, so they'll be able to turn left in and left out. And, you know, so there's no restrictions on access currently as set forth. I did raise this question with FDOT back in July, and they seem to not, they, they seem not to want to close that particular median for whatever reason. But I, I did inquire about that in July, so, you know...
My, my fear of being on the ground, I know FDOT has their manual, and they check boxes, and we like them. And my, my fear for the, the guest overall experience is, if they're flying into VPS, and they don't want to take the toll, they're going to come from Fort Walton, which means they're going to be going eastbound, which most likely is going to put them GPS-going through an uncontrolled intersection, that I don't know how long of an intersection queuing you would need to have the two, three-hundred-and-fifty units, I mean, the, the parking that you guys are going to have. So my, my concern is just congestion that's already a cluster on ninety-eight right there, and just adding insult to injury there. And so I just want to figure out if there's ways that we can be proactive in just making sure that we have a good solution that doesn't just check a, a manual, but actually works in the real world. So that's, those are my two main points, would be the traffic and the trees to add some alliteration.
Going back to the city engineer for a minute, you mentioned that you raised the issue with FDOT, so why did you raise the issue with FDOT? What was your concern?
So it, it's twofold. That's already a bad area. That's already a bad area. I would prefer a right-in, right-out type situation. It's just a better situation to be able to do that. There's a lot of moving parts there because the property across the way has full rights now, so you would be cutting off their rights too. But that is something that I would have preferred. But if FDOT is not willing to make that call, it's their road, so.
All right, so any, I know I guess threw a lot at you from left field. Anything there before I move on? Less is more.
Oh, I was just gonna mention that there is a secondary access to this property through Porter Lane, which is that new townhome development that just got built.
Yep.
Which, you know, will allow you to get back out to Palm.
And that'll be for Gulf Shores Drive intersection? Is that over?
No, coming out the west side.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
By the hotel, just south, and then behind the raceway. And then come out, and then you can get onto Palm. And from there, you can go through all of the side streets development.
Correct.
I'd cheat my way and go out through Target somehow and some way and get out that way. But maybe someday they'll put a signal at Palm and...
Which is actually in FDOT's projects, I believe it's 2027.
Yeah, it's like everything else, though. It's, you know, we'll wait and see.
Yeah.
But that is a, you were talking about, there is a secondary entrance into the property that will allow people to get in and out.
Yeah, my, kind of talking traffic, my fear is we're already at a level of Service F there, and I'm not sure if, per their manual, it's within, it's right there on the cusp of the minimum length from one intersection to the next. So I'm very hesitant for palms to ever happen. So I just want you guys to be there. I just don't want us to create an additional problem. We do our surveys yearly. Over 70% of the citizens say traffic's our number-one issue, and that's been for decades. So I want to just find a way that we can smart growth and make sure that we're not adding to the issues that we already know are out there. So thank you for being here. Councilman Destin.
Thank you, Mayor. Is there any stacking lane there for that last left turn?
As part of the project, we'll be building that.
And how many spaces will it be?
The total length will meet the DOT requirement. I don't know off the top of my head, no.
Well, if we have some stacking lanes there, that would help the left turn. And I'm kind of surprised by DOT, who has already advocated that we close all openings from the bridge to your area. We talked to the wrong people at DOT, it sounds like. So that's an issue. I'd like to know how many stacking, if we're gonna put stacking lanes for that left turn, which we need, so people can get in without blocking a lane of 98. We don't know how many cars that we could put.
No, but all this has been submitted and approved by DOT. We have our DOT access permit.
Ms. Cop, do we have any authority at all over the roads, or are we wasting our time even discussing this since it's DOT road?
Yeah, I mean, it's DOT's road, but if the applicant, you know, had agreed, then we might have been able to go back to FDOT, talk with them.
The, we certainly need some stacking, even if it's three or four cars, that would help a lot.
That's why I was asking the city engineer, you know, but he talked to DOT.
The stacking lane is several hundred feet long, so you have, I mean, you could probably put, I mean, when you say stacking.
Twenty-foot car, we can figure it out.
Oh, yeah, I mean, you could probably put 10 cars easily in there.
Okay, that's not there now, but you're gonna put it in?
Yes, we are, yeah.
They are maximizing the space that's there. It looks to be 165 feet approximately, so.
Well, that's a pretty good stacking lane then.
That's the other problem is what we run into is, as they said, it's as far as we go before we run into the next left turn lane, turning into the second.
Yeah, I got you. Well, at least you're putting one in, and that's positive. Let me talk about the parking. It seems like we're, through various credits, reduced parking by 35%. Is that correct?
It's, well, we have two things going on there. One, there's a provision in the code that allows you to get a 20% reduction in parking through your own code. And then the other is, is that we have meeting space and we have hotel in the same.
Yes.
Logic would tell you that a majority of the people going to the meetings are gonna be people staying at the hotel, because that's the whole reason for having the meeting spaces, is to drive guests to the hotel.
I get that part. Am I accurate that we got a 35% reduction between the two?
Well, there was a, is that correct? Okay, yes, 20% from the MMTD, and then 15%, they calculated the 15% right of internal capture would be.
Well, that comes up to 35, does it not? Come on, guys, 20 and 15, I can figure that out.
Well, I thought.
That's exactly right.
Yeah.
Okay, and the point I make is, without the reductions, it was 426 spaces. Now we're down to 333 spaces, almost a 100-space reduction. So when the hotel is full, and in the code, it requires 17 spaces for employees, we do not even have one space per room at the hotel, not including whatever activity may be going on at the convention center. And even if we figure that, we say 15% of the participants at the convention center will be hotel residents, even if we bump it up to 30%, it looks to me like we are still reduced parking to the point that it may not be adequate. So as we go through all these credits, what's the criteria? As long as they apply for it, we just automatically grant it? Is that how it works?
Yes, sir. Per the code, as long as they have an engineered shared parking analysis, the city manager shall approve it.
So there's really no discretion if they reply for it? We have to give it to them?
Yes, sir.
David, you're the boss. Is that, we don't have any, there's no wiggle room? There's nothing that changes?
So not the way the code's written currently. We would need to change the code.
So you guys have to grant it period, right, staff?
I'm sorry.
So staff has to grant it if it's applied for?
Correct, and we have changed it in the code that's being updated, so.
What's the status on that LDC rewrite?
So the Article 2, 3, and 5 are going to the LPA on the 4th. And so you'll be seeing it at the next council meeting after the 4th. And so we're right now reviewing 6, and we finished 4. And so it'll be going, it got out of order a little bit because it's longer. And then we're currently, staff is reviewing Article 6 and the design manual, so we're making progress.
So we're looking at completion by end of January, ready to put it on the street?
So the total, the completion right now is, should be, I think, the 1st of May. Is that correct?
Early, early May.
Early May.
Looking forward to it.
We are too.
Councilman Destin, you good?
I've got a little more.
Yep.
Tell me about the variance we gave on the roof. That was staff, I guess, gave that variance. What's the thought behind that?
So it's not a variance, it's a waiver per the code.
Is that a somatic difference? Tell me, it's a difference in a variance and a waiver?
Symmetically, yeah. I mean, a variance has gotta go through the BOA, obviously. I know you know this. I'm just stating this for those who don't. A waiver is approvable at the community development director level, and that waiver was approved. Do you know when?
I read it. So what is a criteria that allows you to determine that a waiver should be given?
Let me pull that up for you real quick. So if the city manager or city manager's designee, community development director, determines that a ratio between 512 and 1212 are unduly burdensome on the applicant for a particular project, the ratio may be waived pursuant to an applicable land development regulations, provided, however, that such decision, "City manager or designee shall be consistent with the intent of the comprehensive plan and city charter relating to maximum building heights. No waiver of roof pitch ratio requirement shall be utilized to circumvent or evade the provisions of maximum building heights or other requirement of the comprehensive plan." So basically, if the applicant puts the request in for the waiver, and they show that there is a burden upon their project, and the manager or designee agrees with that, and so long as they're not requesting to exceed the building height as set in the comprehensive plan, it's, it'll, they can approve it.
Define what burden means for me.
Generally financially, pitch roofs.
Financially, is that what it means?
Because most buildings like this are generally, they already, they're already designed for the most part.
Steve, let's, let me just interrupt you for a second, because the applicant made their request, and the burden's on the applicant here. So let's have the applicant explain to the council why they made the request.
I don't want to muddy the water here, but this has already been reviewed and approved.
Just explain why you made the request. I want them to understand your reason for submitting the request. We're not asking them to change the response.
I mean, basically, you have a building that is a prototype building. The Drury, you know, basically builds all over the country, so they already have this design. This is part of their image or package of what they sell as far as their hotel goes. And they don't have, their basic design does not have a pitched roof. So we asked the staff if this was gonna be acceptable, went through the process. They said it wouldn't be a problem, and so they signed and approved the waiver.
Yeah, and I'll, thank you. I wanted the council to understand why you asked, because you have a prototype, and that's not really something staff is qualified to answer. The other part of it is that the overall policy behind that waiver was for the staff to ensure that the reason for the roof pitch requirement wasn't going to be kind of annihilated by the request. We're not trying to give anybody extra height. We're not trying to give anybody extra habitable space, so staff is gonna be looking for that. The Drury Hotel was not trying to do any of those things. They were just trying to fit in with their prototype, and that is why it was approved by staff.
And I understand that part. Of course, the reason for the policy at all is that Destin would have unique structures. Otherwise, why would we have a policy, correct?
Right.
And I understand. To redesign a building is expensive. I get it. I just, you know, why have those policies if you're going to give waivers to them? Because you don't really want something unique that's gonna be built in Destin. So that's another policy issue that we should address. I have one other issue. Oh, what was it, six months ago, however many months ago, we passed mobility fees? The council set a mobility fee amount, and what would the mobility fees be on them? At our, under our current ordinance, what would it be on a project like this?
I think it was close, somewhere around $3 million, but the applicant submitted during a statutory period where we could not yet apply the fees. They came in just under the wire, actually. Had they submitted a couple of months later, they'd be paying millions of dollars.
Yep.
So anyone that comes in now will be paying the new mobility fees.
Yeah, I see their total impact fees, including park, library, police, transportation, is $395,000.
Which is why we updated our fees.
12%, huh? So congratulations, guys, you made it under the wire.
And to answer your question, I think it was around $3.6 million.
And it's a lot.
3.9, but, you know, that's different numbers.
Which will probably have a very chilling effect on things being built in Destin, I would anticipate. That's all the questions I have. On the landscape that the mayor suggested, I know that palm trees is what's on the plan, I guess.
That would fall in plan.
And if we substitute.
I was just assuming. I haven't seen the plans. I just, you know, most people just assume palm trees.
So a question for the applicant. Would the applicant be willing to agree to native trees, such as oak trees, instead of palms, as a voluntary condition that we can put in the DO?
We'll go back to talk to staff about that. I don't want to say right now that we'll definitely do that. One of the things that's interesting is that when you start taking your code and start applying it to these sites, and you start talking about the sheer number of trees that you have to plant back.
119.
It's, you can imagine, it's very hard to plant almost 200 trees on this site and build all the other things that you're gonna build. The city has things like a reforestation requirement, which I always think is kind of interesting, because if anybody's seen the pictures of a Holiday Isle, it never had any trees on it to begin with, yet we still have to do reforestation on it. So there are certain things in your code, if you want to take a look at it, that, I'm not necessarily saying that landscaping's, you know, a bad thing by any means, but sometimes the sheer quantities of it gets kind of cumbersome. It's a lot easier to plant a whole bunch of palm trees in a close proximity to each other than it is oak trees. And you'll see all over this area here where we, and I've been doing this almost 30 years, where I've got projects where we planted oak trees, and we're cutting them and cutting them and cutting them, because they're either growing into each other, or they're growing into power lines, or they're growing into something. So you kind of have to take into consideration the viability of the trees in terms of where to plant them, how many to plant, the distance to plant, and all that kind of stuff, relative to the type of trees. Do you follow what I'm saying there?
I'm following the, I'm just gonna disagree.
Well, no, no, what I'm saying is, what I'm saying is that if we can't, I don't know if we could plant 200 oak trees on this site, and they would be.
Realistically.
Realistically. That's all I'm trying to say about that.
For sure.
Yeah, that's the challenge that you have.
And I get it. You want to front, you want people to be able to see the front. So, I mean, if we could agree for like 80, 75% to be native trees, I'd be okay with you guys figuring out where you need a cluster, and I'm happy to work back and forth. The last thing I want is a giant parking lot with no shade, adding to the heat, adding to just, we're taking away from nature and bringing in things that aren't necessarily helping it in its place. I know we're humans, we like to build, that's cool. But I would like us to at least try to work around nature or build it back a little bit where we can.
I get it. It didn't take me long before I moved here where I realized that palm trees don't necessarily grow.
Yeah, they're a grass, so.
They're an ornamental tree, more or less.
Yeah, yeah, they're, Gino's is a grass, so that's always interesting.
One more comment, if I may, Mayor. You didn't look at a picture that was old enough. Holiday Isle was in fact covered with trees, like it is over by the Coast Guard Station. If you've been here long enough.
There's one in the city where I, it used to be in the city in the hallway that had no trees on it.
That's not, doesn't go back far enough.
That was humans lotting it up.
And so was your lot, covered with oak trees.
Now, the question is, if we don't put it into this development order, and I would remind you that you're saving $3 million on the mobility fee that you don't have to pay, if we put a percentage of natural trees, would that be dependable, City Attorney?
Yes, I mean, and the applicant is pretty much saying that they'd agree to put that percentage, from what I just heard, when Bobby said 75 to 80%, they didn't object.
Well, I think, I think normally, our ratio is a 50 to 50 on canopy trees versus under-story trees. So under-story trees would be crepe myrtles, you know, wax myrtles, you know, something like that. And then, or canopy trees would be oaks and magnolias. So, I mean, if, and we could work something out with staff that, I mean, we could do the natural trees, not a problem. So if it's 75, 85%, that's not a problem.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Can we articulate that in the motion to approve?
Yeah, if you want to make that a condition in the development order for a certain percentage of trees to be canopy trees or native trees, however you want to word it, just include that in your motion to approve the development order.
I'll move that we approve the development order with that caveat.
Do you have a specific percentage?
You're just talking native trees.
Correct, yep, you pick.
80% native trees?
What percentage were we kicking around?
Think 80, 20 is always a good, what is our principle?
50, 50.
No, come on, you already, you squeezed in here on so many levels. We're coming to you about the linear trail, your trail in the back that we're gonna build. I'm coming to you there next.
That'll be a motion.
Okay, and I have a motion. Do I hear a second? All right, I have a second.
So just for clarity, the motion is to approve the development order with a condition added that 80% of the trees included will be native trees.
That's a motion.
All right, I got two nods. All right, with that, seeing nothing further, Councilman Gao.
I just wanted to kind of explain a little bit of the train of thought up here, especially if you've lived here a while, and you remember where Chick-fil-A used to be? You remember the traffic jam when people were trying to pull in there, and the line would carry off into 98? 98 was busy during rush hour. You were blocked down to one lane, people cutting people off, me pulling people out of cars, just stupid stuff happening out there. So that's the train of thought that we're trying to avoid on that left-hand turn. That's what we're trying to say. That's what we're trying to defend. And if you want to talk about the 100 feet, that, through that drive-through all the way around was well more than 100 feet. You know, I don't anticipate you're gonna have that many coming in and out on a timely basis like that, but that's the whole purpose of the concern with that left-hand turn. I just wanted to make sure there was some clarification on that. I just wanted to make sure there was some clarification on that from this end, defending our stance.
All right, thank you for that. Councilman Braden.
Thank you, Mayor. The more I sit here and listen, the more pissed off I get. I should probably just keep my mouth shut, but we've sat here and talked about these palm trees for the last 30 minutes, and if we've had an issue about it, why is it not in the ordinance? Why is, why is it even a question? You know, they shouldn't even done it. And they're parking, they got a 35% parking. So if anybody opens their mouth one more time about, we don't have, you know, parking in the city of Destin, we got a problem, I'm going to try to catch you in a back alley somewhere and put my fist through your mouth, because we're not doing anything. We're just sitting here, and we want to sit here and argue with these guys about the parking. You're getting this huge reduction, 35% reduction in parking, you only have enough parking for what you have. But we've said it, that's, the staff's just going by what we've, we've put in place. If we don't like it, let's change it. So we're not sitting here for an hour at night, you know, arguing with these guys that's already met everything that, you know, we've put in place. I don't get it. I mean, it's on us, not them, not the staff. We allowed the staff to have that waiver, whatever, do what they want to do. So if we need, if we don't like it, we need to fix it. Somebody, the city manager down needs to make a note or something and bring it back to us and let's change it. So we're not wasting our time and their time sitting here talking about it.
Yep.
Yeah, I would tend to agree with that. The problem is, the ordinance at the moment allow for 35% or whatever it comes out to reduction, and we're not going to be changing it until we get to the land development code rewrite, which is months and months away.
We've been doing that for years.
Yep.
We've been bitching about parking for the last 12 years I've been here.
So city manager come up with an idea, was the city attorney, for us to expedite at least the parking part where we allow the parking to be reduced to the point where they won't even have a parking space for every room that'll be close to it, but that doesn't count the, the convention center part. And it's not your fault, that's what our ordinances say, but we need to figure out some way to change that in a more rapid fashion.
You're in the middle of a complete overhaul, so appreciate you hanging in there with us. Councilman Bagby.
Yeah, a couple of things. We do have a tree ordinance, and I was trying to figure out, because when you pull up, can you pull up the landscape plan? That was, I think. M, civil and landscape plans? Because the thing that jumped out at me when I looked at the civil and landscape plans is it looks like we've designed this thing almost to have out parcels, three different out parcels, one behind the building and two in front on either side of the driveway. And it is page, I can't tell what page this is, hang on. Chalk tile engineering, page 2 of 2 for the landscape plan.
That's, that's.
Because what you've done is you've built the hotel, you've built the parking lot, okay, eventually we're going to get here. You've built the parking immediately adjacent to the hotel, you've crammed all the trees in the little islands there, not all of them. You have, you know, one around the perimeter, all the way around the perimeter, okay? And then you've got these huge, what look to be out parcels, which I don't, would we allow this to be subdivided into out parcels there, City Attorney?
Your question is for staff.
Sir, this could be subdivided.
David, somebody.
Sir, this could be subdivided into out parcels as long as they meet the minimum dimensional requirements. And that the existing drury that they're proposing, that that lot by itself would also meet the existing requirements after they split those three out parcels.
Yeah, and so my question to you is, do we have a plan to do one or more out parcels on this hotel?
The intent is to look for a tenant to take those spaces. How, how that's done, we're, we're still trying to figure out.
Okay.
So that, I guess.
Is that why we didn't put any of our 119 trees there?
Well.
See now, I'm, I'm joining Rodney here, because I'm, I'm.
When those, when that additional area is, is developed, then they'll provide additional trees for those areas. So, so the, so the, so the trees that were provided were for the area that we've currently got developed, and if those, if, if the remainder of the property has future development, you'll have more trees. This is not the end of the tree issue.
No, it's not. And so I just, and I applaud you, you know, you, the second exit route or whatever, yes, because what, what we are allowing to be created here, and I, and, you know, the lawyer's going to tell us, well, you got to vote for it because it meets all the codes. But what we are allowed to be created here is the worst intersection, and this said by a guy who lives a half a mile from the worst intersection where we seem to have a rollover accident and have had fatalities out in Crystal Beach area, but we're going to allow the construction of the worst intersection in the city of Destin during the summer, when you got people coming out of big kahunas, walking across the road, you got cars coming out of big kahunas, and you got 200 cars going in and out here. And oh, by the way, we're going to have an Applebee's and a something and a something else on these other three out parcels. And we're not being smart. I, I don't, you know, I, I get why you want to put in palm trees, because you can't cram that many oak trees in those little islands. Okay? And that's why I'm looking into, trying to find the tree ordinance to see what, what the actual requirement is. But I, I would say 80, 20 is being generous on, on the native trees, because then you're going to have to put them somewhere, then cram them in those islands. Okay? Which you, you haven't done. You've, you've, like I said, you've put them around the exterior, and then on the north part there, that part that's showing right there, you've put them on the west, what is that, 10 trees or something, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9? You know, just because we got to figure out where to put 119 trees. This is the, this is not how we design things, this is not how we should design things, this is not how we should approve things, because then when you go down to the southern part and you see there's not even any on the side, so there's no screening between big kahunas and your parcel, and there's no screening between the Palm Drive over there, there's a, there's a screen, a small screen between you and 98, four trees, I'm sorry, nine trees, four on one side and five on the other side. The, and if you look at that turn lane down there, I don't think that that is, go, go down a little bit, scroll down a little bit. I'm sorry. Scroll down, e, just a little bit more there. You see that turn lane? I don't, I can't read the numbers on that, but that is not the stacking lane for 20 cars there. And I understand why, because you have the turn lane going over the other way to turn to the south when you're headed on 98 West. The landscaping plan does not meet our requirement. I mean, it might, because we, half those trees are not going to live in those little islands there. Go back up to the islands. Okay? That's the south islands, where you have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, you know, in the corner islands, and 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 in the, the little straight islands. You know, how, how the heck did we get here? And that's a staff question.
And Dave's nodding.
So, sir.
I'm willing to listen, guys.
Absolutely.
Dave's nodding.
So, again, just, just going off of what the current code says, so right now, current code says that no more than 40% of the trees can be palm trees. If you're going to use sable palms, you have to double up, so for every one tree, you have to plant two. And then on top of that, they have to pick from our, our tables listed in the LDC of native trees, specifically for the street trees for the MMTD, and then for, the, they're also providing one per 25 linear feet, they're, they're picking from that same table as well. So what they have provided currently meets our code, sir.
If those trees don't survive how long according to our code, when do they have to replace them? Because they're going to be replacing trees on this thing forever.
So I'd have to look at.
Because those trees aren't going to live.
Property maintenance code on that, but.
Huh?
I would have to look at the property maintenance code on that, sir, but yes, you, you are correct. If they die, they have to.
Okay, Article 12, let me help you out here. I, you know, I'm, I'm not going to beat this horse to death, but thi, this is, this is wrong. We've designed a project, to design a project just so we can get through our out parcels. Okay? And I, I, fortunately for y'all, I'll be turned out next, or this coming November, which is next November, okay? So I won't be here when you bring the plans for these three out parcels, but I'll probably be sitting, and I probably won't be found to have standing by the mayor to get up and complain about the out, out parcels and how all the trees are dead in this project. But I, I'm, this is just, I've said it.
Councilwoman Trammell.
I was just going to ask Mr. Destin if he would add to his motion to include the dog walking area as being part of this requirement.
With these questions about the landscaping meeting our ordinance, I, I am inclined to withdraw my motion. With the questions that have been arisen about the landscaping and whether it meets the ordinance or not? Maybe somebody has a better motion than I had.
I was actually going to mention that, you know, you guys said a couple of things. I said, you know, we want to be neighborly, we want to work with you guys, and then you say, as long as you meet the ordinance, then, you know, you've got to pass it, or, not that you have to, but, you know, that's, and I think that's what you're kind of talking about right now. So I think I, if you'll let me, want to stick back to, I'm going to go back, that's the other part. I don't have the authority here today to tell you I am going to commit to 80%. I'd like to go back to what I told you, and that is, I'm going to work with staff, and we're going to try to make you guys happy. Again, we're going to try to be good neighbors, and we're going to try to go above and beyond what our current requirement is, but that's not something that I can agree to and have the authority to do today.
That makes sense, because I think, I think there's a lot more, without having to do a total rework, because I know that's not fair, there's, there's a lot of time and money in these plans, but as, as kind of everyone's already said, these plans are exactly what's wrong with Destin, and why the majority of our citizens are trying to see a change in a different direction, because what our code is allowing and what we need, and I hope we're all taking notes for this LDC, is this not to happen, because this is exactly what's destroying the community and what's pissing off every resident that votes and wants to live here for their life. So that's not a shot at you guys, you guys are doing your job, you're meeting, you're, you're hitting the, the requirements, you're hitting the equation, but the equation's not working for Destin, and this is, this is just adding more BS to what we already know is, is our issues in Destin. So with that, Rodney, you're up.
Thank you. This may be for staff, or you guys may know, wasn't there a parking study analysis that tells how many cars this is going to put on the in and out and on the road?
So, as part of our traffic report, we do, we do calculate the amount of PM peak hour trips it'll generate and how many, the, the distribution of how many come in and go out, and we provide that in our, in our analysis to DOT as far as that goes. I don't think it's required for the city.
Anybody from the city?
So, sir, we, we did require a traffic analysis. I believe that, oh, I'm looking right here. So their total PM peak trips for that property increases to 209, peak hour trips, because that, the concurrency for that area, because that part of 98 is already classified as an F, it, it, it affects concurrency, you and I know it affects concurrency, but it doesn't make it any lower. So at that point, it still is compliant with our code.
So if it's required, but it really doesn't matter what it says, why, why is it required to start with then? Why are we making them spend their money on something that, I mean, if it said it's going to be a thousand more trips on that road, which is going to make it that much worse, but there's nothing we can do about it, why are we, why are we wasting our time and their time with it? Or is it just something that's required by the state?
We, we do provide a traffic distribution analysis and give that to the city, so the city can basically keep track of what traffic you have now and what traffic is being added.
But there's nothing in place that says that you're going to put 500 more trips on the road per day, so you can't do that. You, you're only allowed 300 or nothing, or, I'm just throwing numbers out there. There's nothing that says you're putting too many, or you're not putting enough or anything else, so I really don't know why, trying to understand why you have to even do a parking study or analysis. And as far as your trees, if half them trees die, I wouldn't worry about it. Nobody's going to do anything about it. We've got development orders all over this town that nobody wants to go look at because they know that there's a whole lot of stuff there that ain't supposed to be there. And we can't even replace our own trees on Airport Road that people are running over and killing. I'm just saying.
Councilwoman Nibar.
I just, I feel like we are giving these guys a hard time. What we need to be doing is having our staff and our new director over planning get a little bit more aggressive on getting our LDC finished, does not take six more months, maybe put on a finer tune of people that can just focus on that, because we're, we're years behind on getting that finished. We shouldn't drag this out, and we shouldn't put these people through this kind of grilling when it's not their fault. They followed what we've got written. So, David, I'm hoping that after tonight, you realize we need to do this faster, we need to do it, put a more concise group of people on it, get it done.
Yes, and so the, one of the changes is the MMTD is going to be removed, so the, the more lenient landscaping requirements in the MMTD are going to be removed. So part of that's already been changed, and, and you'll see it soon. Also, just to clarify, the overall reduction in the parking was 22%. That 15% only applied to the calculation for the conference center, and when you do that, it ends up being 22%. That's it.
With the reductions, then there are just one space per room and nothing for the convention center, which shouldn't work out that way. If we have legitimate concerns about the landscaping, whether it meets the ordinance or not, then I'm going to withdraw my motion. I'll let somebody else make a motion.
All right, so I have a motion withdrawn. I have no one else on the board. If anyone would wish to make a motion or comment.
I'll make a motion to continue to allow the staff to more closely review the landscaping and allow the developer to come back with their proposed landscaping, revised landscaping plan for an increase in native vegetation.
Can I comment?
Sure.
I mean, since we're all here, just talking about.
We're the only ones here, man, we got all night.
Like I said, I've been doing this a long time here, and I've been standing in front of this council, not recently, but in the past, for several hours at a time, and it seems to get like this. And, and we're not going to solve the traffic problem. I mean, we've been talking about traffic since the day I got here. We could stop development in the city of Destin, just stop it, and your traffic will continue to increase on Highway 98.
So we want to add to it, though.
No, I'm not, the question you ask is, do we want to stagnate the city in an attempt to solve one problem that we can't control because of the fact that it just, and this was a, and you can go back, city council meeting, David Theoryak came up here one time and explained this all to you. up here one time and explained this all to you, and it, and it's, and I don't think that the, your land development code is going to solve your traffic problem. I don't think DOT is going to solve your traffic problem. Unfortunately, it's inherent of the fact that we got one major corridor that goes right through the middle of the city, and that's just the way it is. And you can go throughout all the state of Florida and see similar situations like this, and Highway nineteen down on the east coast. I mean, it's just the way things work. It's unfortunate. I, I just said, I just, it's, it's frustrating for us to sit here and come to you and say, we've been through months of review by your staff. We meet the code for landscaping. Whether you like it or not, I, I can't help that. You mean, you guys can change it. I sit on the ad hoc committee for Okaloosa County that basically sits there, and it's a group of people that basically looks at the land development code and makes suggestions and changes. It can be done. It can be done quickly. It's all a matter of what you choose, but as far as this project goes, it meets your code today. The whole MMTD, and, and I'll be honest with you, your code is not fun to go, as a consultant, it's not fun to work with. It is very complex. It's cumbersome. It's got things in there that I sometimes can't even understand how it works, and I think sometimes your staff can't. And, I mean, the staff that you see here, I've been through, God only knows how many iterations of staff that's gone through here and come up with all these ideas of what we're trying to do. MMTD, a good example. We're, we're, we're at, at F, level service F. Now we're just arguing what's the degree of F we're at. Like you said, you know, why does it matter if we even count traffic anymore? It's just is what it is. But the property owner spent a lot of money to buy a piece of property in the city of Destin, improve it, and use your code to, to, as a guideline to do it by, which he's done. So all we would ask tonight is you approve the project as it is right now, go ahead and change your code however you want, and the next time I come before you, I'll have a different approach to that project, and hopefully it'll be better, or whatever you consider, you know, a, a more robust, whatever, code that would actually create something that is, I don't know what you were trying to say, that the, that the citizens of the, of city of Destin would, would, you know, enjoy better, or whatever it is. But, you know, certain things, you've got a challenge. You've got a serious challenge. I don't know if changing your land development code is going to fix all those problems. But things like landscaping and stuff like that, the parking, I, you know, if you'd have said a hundred percent parking in your code, we would have more parking spaces. But we didn't need to, so we don't. So, I mean, that, that's not on us, that's like, you, somebody said tonight, it's on you. So, I mean, there's no reason to continue it. I mean, staff is, I mean, we've gone through, you know, comments, revisions, comments, revisions, and believe me, we would love to be, already be under construction right now, but we've had to wait to go through this whole entire process, and here we are, you know, before you, saying, your staff has approved it. We meet your land development code. Simple as that. We're willing to write a check for three hundred and something thousand dollars, donate a portion of our property that's part of your transportation corridor, you know, master plan that you have in order to build the east-west connector behind our property? All those things, we said, okay, fine, 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 fine. Here we are. All we're asking for you to do is approve the project that meets your code. And all we're asking for is somebody to make a motion of that, make a second, and, and then get us started. And if you want to call me, call me anytime. I've been sitting around this, I've, I've watched every iteration of this code, city of Fort Walton Beach, Okaloosa County, you name it, anything, from Petzicolet to Panama City, I'll be glad to share my two cents of thirty years' experience doing land development in this, in this community.
Yeah, I hear you. Councilman Bagby.
Question for the staff. What's the buffer between commercial and residential, and commercial and public? Landscape buffer. By our code.
Let me look that up right now, sir.
And David, while they're looking for that, what is the property to the, oops, Google Maps, what is the Olympus zoned as?
We're bringing up the map, zoning map now.
Okay.
If you go to-
Because you got, you got-
If you go to the site plan, it'll, it says what the zoning, future land use and use of all the adjacent properties are. That's, should be like page four.
Because the cord grass is residential, I believe, over there.
Town center mixed use is the zoning district.
It's all, it's all the same zoning. It's all town center mixed use over there.
On Twin Lakes?
Yes. Twin Lakes would be behind us.
Twin Lakes is behind you on the northwest corner.
Access through airport. I think we have the, I think the whole Airport ninety-eight is MTSU, I believe.
I think that's residential up there.
I don't even know if, is, is the Gulf Power easement owned by Gulf Power? I don't, so I don't think we abut Twin Lakes to the rear.
Most because we have to go get their approval, we put a walking path through.
You have to ask Gulf Power, or I should say Fuller Power and Light-
No, not Gulf Power, Fuller Power and Light, no, we got to go ask that neighborhood.
Even if you own the property, you'd still have to go ask them.
You don't own the easement.
Yeah.
You own a roadway, not a neighborhood.
Now, now you see the complexity of trying to work through the city code?
No, yeah. We'd- Ideally, it would be a nice clean where qualified people want to come and build, because it's easy, quick, and efficient, and it produces on your sheet something that we're all happy with, but that's not the case currently.
It's, it's more the formatting than it is the substance.
Yeah.
And now, you may have, have some substance issues with it, but I have formatting issues with it. As a person who uses it as a tool to do work in the city, it's sometimes very cumbersome to get through the actual document itself.
Yeah, I'll shoot you the chapters as they come to us.
Sure.
You're not going to like this, but in the, in the MMTD, there is no buffer requirement, but we're very, we're double checking that answer. Well, we see in the code where it says that.
Well, in chapter, was it, not chapter eight, chapter twelve?
This is the tricky part about your code, is you have-
Article twelve, I'm sorry.
You have overlay districts, you have districts that are in different zones and everything, and what happens is you go to one section that says this is landscaping, then you've got to jump over to the other section that says, well, this is my zoning, that basically says, well, these things aren't required, or you get a reduction, or something like that. So you literally have to jump all over the place to just get to the number, or a number, yes. And, and it, it gets, like I said, cumbersome.
Yeah.
We've been trying to fix that for about fifteen years.
And in defense of that, the reason, rationale behind all that was that you would give certain incentives to certain areas to do certain things to make it look a certain way. And so you've got your different category, I mean, you've got more zoning categories, I think, in just the city of Destin than Okaloosa County does.
Yeah, seven square miles, yeah.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a substitute motion if I could, so we can move on with this evening, is that possible?
Yeah, jump in if you're doing a motion.
Or do we, do we need to wait for answer, or what do we need to do?
There's no motion on the table.
Oh, you cleared it off?
Yeah. He withdrew.
It's true.
Jim, you didn't make one?
No.
Go ahead. I'm going to the city council, approve the jury Plaza Hotel, the major DO as presented.
One second.
Jimmy, you want to go for your questions?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's confirmed, there's no buffer requirement in MMTD.
How can you have no buffer requirement, even between a commercial and a residential?
I, I don't know what the rationale for what y'all's, or not y'all's, whoever's vision it was when they created an MTD, but I think they were trying, to me, looking at it, it looks like they were trying to make a more urban type of a development area with mixed use, but that's, that's speculation on my part.
All right, Kevin, got anything else? All right, anything else further, Jim? All right, I got a motion on the table.
One comment, Mayor.
Please.
One comment. I tend to agree with the developer that they have, they have met the code on the parking, on the traffic. The only thing that I question is the landscaping, and that's the only thing that's in, in play right now. And this gentleman says he doesn't have the authority to, to say that he can do the twenty-eighty.
I do not, but like I said earlier, and if you agree to pass the ordinance today, I mean, I don't know, I can't, shake your hand, we're going to be good neighbors, we're going to be here for the next thirty, forty years. I will tell you, promise you that I will go back to my group, and we will make an enhancement on the landscaping. I'm, I'm not going to sit here and commit to a certain percentage, but I will tell you, and again, promise you, that I will do that, and come back to you with some sort of enhancement to what is out now.
Okay, I, I'll, I'll just make a statement. I've been doing this a long time, and I've been involved with projects like this, and I've done, I've done projects from a mom and pop little, you know, restaurant, or whatever you want to call it, to a big commercial development. Almost to a T, every single big commercial development is done by a name brand organization, does an amazing job in their landscaping, above and beyond what your code requires. What you saw on, on those drawings is what's required by your code. It looks very amateurish, stick figure, whatever you want to call it. I drew that, our company drew that. It meets the minimum requirements for your code. I've seen the landscape, I've talked to the landscape architect for this project. What they're going to do, compared to my, my plan show, is going to be drastically better. You're going to get a lot more bang for your buck on this, and it'll be a, a project you'll be proud of.
Can you have an answer on that question, the December sixteenth meeting?
I'd rather not wait. I'd rather you agree that I'm going to come back and make an enhancement to what is currently there.
Well, then we could approve contingent upon you coming back with the right answer.
That's not fair.
Well, it's, it's not fair, but it's fairer than just it not passing it tonight.
Yeah.
Because I'm pretty good at counting, and it's not looking absolutely, and I'd rather not see them turned down completely.
I, I don't think it'll be a problem.
It's a big corporation, I can't see this two weeks from now.
Go ahead.
I, 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 to be honest, I don't think it's going to be a problem to meet the requirement because of the fact that the type of vegetation that's, that's available as native species should not be a problem to meet on this project.
Well, if we all think it's not a problem, then-
We've, we've all taken a lot of time here, and if you let me make one phone call, I can give you an answer right now. I'm sorry.
Give me five minutes.
And I'll give you an answer.
That sounds fair to me. Call a break, Mayor.
All right, five minutes. All right, five minutes.
I'll agree to that and go ahead and put the dog park in it.
Oh, nice.
All right, I have a substitute motion. We beat each other through the face, but here we are.
All right, well, now for clarity, just for clarity, so that both the applicant and the city council are on the same page. What I am understanding is that there would be a motion for approval with two conditions. One would be for the dog park to be included and one would be for the 80% native trees.
And dog park might be the wrong word.
Yeah, no, relief area. Yeah.
Every you want to call it.
So they're not using the right of way is the goal. Yeah, yeah. Any 20,000 square foot dog park.
That's what we will approve.
Yeah, so that's the substitute motion, has those two contingencies, yeah. All right, that's motion, I have nothing else on the board, let's take the vote. I don't know. I'm gonna have a chance to vote. There you go, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Cop, 5B. Thanks for being here. Oh. Um, is it? All right. She's up there, okay.
Just making sure staff knew that we had to add some language to the D.O. Okay, so this is ordinance number 2517-LC, an ordinance of the city of Destin, Florida, relating to plating, requiring administrative review, processing and approval of plaques pursuant to Chapter 177 Florida statutes, providing for findings of fact, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. This is second reading and there have been no changes since first reading.
All right, thank you for that. With that, at this time, if anyone wishes to speak on this public comment, on this public topic, this is your time to do so. Seeing none, we will close the comments for ordinance 2517-LC and I'll entertain a motion, Ms. Councilwoman Trammell.
Mayor, I'll move that the city council adopt proposed ordinance 25-17-LC on second reading.
Second.
I got a second by Councilwoman Abear, any further discussions? Seeing none?
I got an alter- no, I don't.
I got a substitute motion. All right, I'll call the vote. All right, so moved. Take it away, Ms. Cop.
Thank you, Mayor, this is ordinance number 2523-LC, an ordinance of the city of Destin, Florida, deleting Article 1, general provisions legal of the Land Development Code to remove and replace the existing Article 1 in its entirety, providing for title, jurisdiction, and intent containing regulations related to vested rights, code compliance and enforcement, providing for authority, providing for findings of fact, providing for incorporation into the Land Development Code, providing for conflicting provisions, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. This is second reading and there have been no changes since first reading.
All right, thank you for that. Seeing that this is a public hearing at this time, if anyone wishes to speak on this specific topic, this is your time to do so. Seeing none, closing the comments, entertain a motion.
Mayor, I'll make that motion, I move that the city council approve ordinance 25-23-LC as presented.
All right, thank you for that. Got a motion and a second, seeing no further discussion, we'll call the vote. All right, I just have it so moved, 7-0, passage unanimously, moving on, Councilman Braden.
Good to have you back, Mayor, hope you had fun, you've done a great job, let's keep it rolling.
Thank you, sir, let's keep it jamming. All right, Councilwoman Trammell.
Yes, I just have a couple of things tonight. One, I brought up the dog walking area for this particular hotel. I think we need to look at all of our hotels, we have a certain percentage of green space in everything that's been built so far in Destin, and I think they need to designate a pet walking area with the, whatever, pet bags or whatever you call those, for their customers as well as ours. I have a business that backs up to a hotel and I can tell you they have stolen the signs, they've bent the signs we've mounted on the wall, and I'm still scooping poop. And it's not from my business because there are no animals there. So I think it's important that we look at this now, because a lot of these hotels, especially along Old 98 there, were built before they even allowed dogs in hotel rooms or cats or whatever they are, service animals. So I think we need to look for an ordinance, I would like to make a motion that we look at an ordinance requiring some form of pet walking area being designated at each one of our hotels, or motels or whatever we call those. For that.
Yep, all right, I have a motion.
Thank you.
Very enthusiastic second. Any further discussions?
Mine's a horse, are we gonna do a stable and round pen also?
Well, we've had a goat. You know, we've had a goat as a service animal, horses can be service animals, if they can stay at that hotel, then that hotel needs to provide a place for them.
All right, with that, we'll call the vote. I'm glad you're getting help, Tori. Okay, 7-0, so moved. Anything else?
The only other thing, this gentleman that was up here, I do not remember his name, the engineer.
Oh, I thought you were talking about Eric, Rick.
No, for the jewelry.
Yes.
Who says he's been on advisory councils for other LDCs.
Mark.
In other areas, Mark. I think maybe it might be worth giving him a call and having him look at what they're gonna present to us.
Yeah.
That's just a suggestion, not a motion. I also have, I've had some complaints, actually some requests, not complaints, that the trees on Mountain Drive be trimmed. And I think I've spoken to Michael Burgess about that, we did promise the property owners on Mountain Drive, when we redid that, that the city would take care of the right of ways, so.
Just to piggyback off that, if we can kind of do like a weekly sweep, the, kind of, from pets and Taco Bell and every other, all the other things out there, that 10-foot sidewalk is getting used more and more, yay, but with usage comes litter and other things, so I don't know if there's already a schedule in place, but just kind of throwing that out there to piggyback off the trees, so, Councilman Destin.
Thank you, Mayor, I just have one question, the gentleman that asked us about Pine Street, I believe it is, what's the status of that, City Manager, is that in front of community development? Is it coming back to us, what is?
I'm not certain. Michael or Robert, can we know, so we can find out?
Repeat the question, I'm not sure I understand.
Gentleman during public testimony asked about Pine Street and extension and what's the status and where is that going and what's happening with that?
It'd be under the new mobility plan.
What I can add is very limited, that project was included in the mobility plan.
Right.
I'm not aware of any capital improvement project that we have even begun to initiate to make that happen, I don't.
And that's what I thought the status was and the mobility plan would have to come back to us for final action anyway, correct?
Correct, as would any kind of construction contract or anything else related.
Right, okay, that's the only question I have, thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you, Councilman Bagley?
Yeah, that was one of my three, it's not in the plan for five years. So we know nothing's gonna happen before then, we haven't even approved the, finally approved the mobility plan. So, but yes, it is one of the 35 or 40 options that may get looked at in the next 15 years. I'll make, if I need to make a motion, I don't think I do, but I think we should ask our TDC rep, Councilman Schmidt, to see if the TDC is willing to help us fund improvements to the seawall, because we made the motion on John and Guy, but the other thing I think we can kill tonight, or not kill tonight, address tonight is the seawall funding by the TDC. Kevin, can you, at your next, I don't even know if y'all are meeting before the end, tomorrow, okay? Could you ask them if they're inclined to do that?
Yeah, I'd be happy to.
Thank you.
Were those not the items that we're talking about in January? Or is it just?
No, the items I think we're talking about in January actually require our funding or the CRAs funding or the, you know, that's just a, see if the TDC would help us spend money, you know, would be willing to spend some of its money to help us improve the seawall, at least that was the ask, the way I read it, okay?
I should note there was further conversation about that item coming to us.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Okay, and then I'm gonna make a motion that the Chapter 8 in the Land Development Code be moved up in the queue to the first or second meeting in January. That is the Mac Daddy that would have prevented the hour-long discussion tonight on multimodal districts and all this and why we're giving away parking spots and everything else. So I'll make a motion that that be moved up in the schedule.
All right, have a motion and a second, any further discussions? Seeing none, take the vote. Yeah, yeah, he's got a custom vote. David, you wanna jump in while there?
Yeah, what, so, and what is in 8 will now be in Article 6, and so that is the thing we're working on currently.
Awesome.
So I want you to bring Article 6 in January.
Got it.
Okay. All right, with that, there we go.
I'm sorry, and finally.
No, Tori's.
He's hovering.
He's hovering around.
All right, I just have it so moved.
And finally, I'll apologize, because I fully expected to come in and just vote for that previous item and move on, because I know that they did meet the Land Development Code, they met technically all the requirements, but as we go through the Land Development Code, that's the thing that's most important then we have to look for. It's not, well, does, when we rewrite it, do we, are we gonna get what we want? It's, are we gonna get what we don't want? Because you're gonna have three out parcels and I guarantee you, every one of those will come before us and two of them will be restaurants and they will say, oh, the parking, it's, it's, you know, we're just gonna cater primarily to the people in the hotel, so we don't have to have, but, you know, 20 parking spots and it's, and that's how we got into this screwed up condition that we are in today, was by the law of unintended consequences, and the people, I'm tired of it, I've been tired of it for a long time, but that's, that's why each of us has to read the Land Development Code and think to ourselves, how could some developer take this to the nth degree and build a monstrosity out there that will just continue to upset or cause traffic problems or do all these other things? And so hopefully in January, we will address Chapter 6, thank you.
All right, Councilwoman Abear.
Jim said it all, thanks.
Yep, I'm in the same boat. Councilwoman Gal.
I have something small. Yeah. Short, however you want to characterize it. I respectfully request the council to allow me to speak with Chief Sasser at the Fire Control District to discuss potential improvement for life safety measures at residential homes to include short-term rentals and then come back to the council if there are productive suggestions for council to consider.
All right, we have some.
He's in motion, I'll second it.
Yep.
Yep.
All right. You got multiple seconds, ready to figure that out? All right, any further discussion on that? All right, seeing none, Tori wants to be on fire.
I'm the fireman. That's my name.
All right, 7-0.
Hey, Mayor.
She said he just wants to be on the calendar.
On the calendar?
All right. Oh, yeah, yeah.
May I?
Yeah, please.
I was gonna make a comment with what Jim was talking about, with the parking stuff. When are we gonna stop allowing a engineer or whoever to pencil whip a parking study and say that now all of a sudden we have enough parking, we've added whatever that requires 100 people or 200 people, but somebody's pencil whipped it and said they don't need to have that anymore? Is that, is that gonna eliminate that in Chapter 6?
If we remember to bring it up.
If we require it to have 100 parking places for your business, we should not allow Joe Blow, whoever it is, to say, well, I say they have enough because so much in caption, internal and this, that, and other, all this BS and now they got enough.
Yeah.
Hope we're doing away with that, thank you.
Yep, agreed. Councilor Schmidt.
Thank you. First, wanted to send some thank yous to Parks and Rec and to Michael and his team for Christmas decorations, some of them have been turned on and people were telling me thank you for doing that, so I wanted to pass that along to all the people that were doing that. The median maintenance contracts, we renewed that tonight in the consent agenda, not sure. That was their first year and we renewed it. I just will highlight a few things, they do have, part of their general maintenance is as they are out there every single week or, you know, at their schedule, general cleanup is part of it. So the expectation should, it should be on them to be cleaning up those areas.
Oh, on mountain, yeah.
Not on the city staff.
Okay.
Or anywhere.
Oh, great point.
As well as to Councilwoman Trammell's point, the trimming of the trees on Mountain Drive, that it's specifically in the contract, so if they are not doing it, I would expect staff to be enforcing the contract. With that said though, I do want to, we've talked about it casually at times about the medians, but I'd like to, before next budget, to have maybe the Town Center CRA or Public Works and Safety consider a plan for airport road maintenance medians, Main Street medians, and Mountain Drive right of ways to bring to us for landscaping improvements, because I think it's beyond time, you know, like this contract, these people go out there and they're weed whacking dirt on half of our medians, you know? And we have the Hawthorne bushes that are just god awful and create so many weeds, so. First, I guess I would ask, is there a certain committee, Ms. Trammell, that you would recommend sending that to? Public Works, they have money to use, I think it's gonna be our budget, so hopefully we'll have the money, but do you have an idea before I put a motion out there?
Well, I would say Public Works in conjunction with the Harbor and the Town Center. Both of them can meet at the same time, they can both talk about the same subject, they can both put their input into it. I don't think.
The Harbor's the Mountain Drive one, probably.
Yeah, Harbor would be Mountain Drive, Airport would be Town Center. So in those particular issues, both of them need to have input into them, because both the CRAs are actually trying to do the planning for what they want to see there.
No, it's perfect, so I'd just like to go ahead and make a motion then to have Larry and staff get with the Town Center CRA and the Harbor CRA. I'm just gonna leave them out of it for now, just let's do the two CRAs. You know, like you just said, as their babies, and have them start planning a work project for maintenance improvements for next calendar's budget cycle.
Okay, so they would be creating a work plan.
I probably shouldn't have said the work project, but it's gonna take planning, right? We just talked about, for an hour about freaking palm trees and oak trees, so.
Exactly.
We're gonna need a landscaper architect to give us a plan, not just our maintenance guy, so.
Yeah, I get that, but for the Town Center verbiage, creating a work plan will then delineate how they're gonna go down through that and how they're gonna investigate that and what kind of research they're gonna do.
I just want the committees just to figure out how to make the medians better before it comes to us, whatever's the easiest way possible, so, motion.
All right.
To make that happen, bring it back next year to be able to be on our time schedule for the budget.
All right, motion, are you the second?
Second.
All right, Councilman Bagley, discussion?
Yeah, no, I agree 100%, and this is one of the things that's been very frustrating, probably for, even more so for Sandy. We've gotten away from the work plans, the work plans feed into, were designed to feed into the budget. So the Harbor should be bringing us their work plan by the end of the year, and when we start in February with our strategic plan, that should be one of the items that's on the agenda is, hey, we want you to put in 200, 400, whatever their estimate or cost is, to the budget to improve the landscaping in the Harbor, in the median, and the same thing with Airport and Main Street. It.
You're adding that to Kevin's comment, right?
Yeah, I mean, I agree 100% with what Kevin's saying, I'm just saying, we've gotten away from the process of, when's the last time we actually, you know, no offense to the sheriff and the Fire District and the School District and everybody else that comes and presents during our strategic plan, but y'all are valued partners, y'all in the chamber and everything, but really that strategic plan is more about what we're gonna design in the budget, and we ought to be hearing from the committee saying, here's the 10 things that we, you know, on our work plan, that we would like to see you guys put in the budget this year. Okay, thank you very much, I think some of that's good, some of that may have to wait a couple of years. So if we can get them to bring us that information at the strategic planning meeting, at the first budget meeting, you know, dogs and cats will be sleeping together.
Yeah, yeah, my, so we're gonna have to vote on it, my very quick two cents is, can't wait to see it and I think there's a way to design it to where the cost goes down, to your point of weeding dirt for no reason because it's in the contract, the bushes, the trees, everything comes in to where there's less to do other than the biannual spray and kind of the control of it, so I think it can be a cost savings even after doing it all, so I'm very much excited for this, so with that, we'll call the vote, yes.
Mayor, if I may interject something?
Yes.
Can you please, in that motion or at least with the committees, allow us to attend the meeting if y'all are redesigning medians? The design inside of median plays a large part in the effectiveness of law enforcement to include, mainly on speed enforcement. If you design a median that my guys can't turn around in to go catch someone that's speeding or, and a driver realizes that that's the case, they're gonna increase their speed in that area. So I would like for one of my CRDs to be able to attend those meetings to put some input into the.
I see no issue with that at all, there will be no redesigning of the physical turnings, it's just inside the median's landscaping, but, please, sure, come on.
All right. All right. With that, we'll take the vote.
Hurry up, Rodney. We're almost done.
I'll vote.
All right. So I just, from all the discussions tonight, for what it's worth, because I know it's late and maybe it doesn't matter, but I guess I'm going on five years now and some of us as well, and I've learned a lot over those five years through two to three different city managers now, counting interim and things like that, and staff members and directors and all, I mean, we have great staff members, right? But too often up here, we're too casual with what we're wanting to be done and needing to be done. I believe some of us, myself included, and I've had people tell me this before of, if you want something specifically to happen, you must make a motion to get the support of council to tell Larry to go do it, not just, I hope you're listening down there, I'm not throwing you under the table, but that, you know, maybe he wasn't listening, maybe his mind was on something else, but I just would encourage all of us, you know, especially as the New Year is approaching, I'm excited about the visioning session because I agree, Jim, that I hope it's gonna be the best one we've had in a long time, because it needs to be, because the past few years, I think we're still playing catch-up on a lot of things, still, you know, and I think it's very important that our communication, if, like you did with the LDC tonight, we could have done that a year ago, two years ago, if somebody really wanted that one specific thing done on the LDC, they'd have it at the next meeting, if we told them to. And so I just, you know, encourage all of us to keep that in mind, where if we want something to be done, bring it, tell them to bring it to us in a motion, and a lot of times it gets shot down by some of our friends up here, but, 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 that's what we gotta do, I mean, you know, we all have different goals and it needs to be brought up here. And put it in a motion, direct form, if you want a change to happen, let's do it, like, let's make it happen. You want short-term rental ideas for inspections, like, that's a great idea. There's communities all across the country in tourism areas that require a lot more short-term rental policies than we have in place, that will only make our town better, I think, so I'm looking forward to whatever he's about to do. So bring it, is all I'll say, and forever, whoever's not gonna be here at the next meeting, I don't know, maybe I will be, who knows? Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, actually, that Tuesday is my son's band concert, his first time in band, he's in fifth grade, so I won't be here on the 16th, I'll be at my son's band concert, so Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
And I want to just say a word to what you just said. The clearer direction you give us, the more successful we're gonna be in delivering back to you. So thank you, Councilmember, that's important from a staff perspective, because I can assure you, when we understand clearly what it is you want us to bring back, we're gonna give it all we have to bring it back to you in a timely manner, so thank you for that.
Thanks.
That motivated me, I make a motion, we have German chocolate cake, December 16th, back in the conference room.
I'll second that.
Any discussions? No, he's kidding, he's kidding. He's withdrawing his motion.
I withdrew.
All right, thank you. All right, glad to be back, thank you, Councilman Destin, for stepping in, you did great, I loved watching. I, you know what, you handled some of those, you were there at the right time at the right place, so thank you for being you and having all the wisdom that you provide. That's all I have, just thank you for everyone hanging in there and I'm glad the city hasn't burned down, and Ms. Cop.
I don't have anything other than, I just want to check, do we have a quorum for December 16th? I know Kevin said he can't go, I thought Jim said he might not be there.
Probably, if I am here, I'll be very late.
So you might not be here, so we, okay, so I just want to count, is there anyone else that might not be here on the 16th or that won't be here?
How many do you need, four for four?
Four. Four.
All right, I'll call ya.
It sounds like you're gonna be here, but if anyone makes any plans, do the holidays and stuff, if you could just let Larry know so we can. What is Monday night, what are we doing that we can't do this? Monday is the state delegation meeting.
Where at?
Shalimar, 5:30.
It's not here?
Yeah.
Can you send that information back to us again?
Yes, ma'am, be glad to.
All right, public comments?
I have one thing there.
Yep.
And I'm, no, it's not, because actually I forgot, I didn't put this down. In our delegation meeting, we have our priority list, do we, is the mayor or do, who's, did we, again, going to Kevin's point, did we designate somebody and do we know exactly what they're gonna say and what they're gonna ask our, you know, Trumbull and Maney?
Yeah, good point.
For, because, no offense, the last time it.
Oh, you didn't like my pitch?
It was entertaining, but it was.
I mean, my thought is, all right, they're gonna hear from everyone, the groundwork is before, after, and during. This is kind of the show pony, here's my pony, so, you know, you gotta stand out a little bit, come on, sharks.
We have not planned that out yet, so.
Okay, I don't even care if it's City Manager, but we need to have a plan, because we do have some serious needs that we need state funding.
And on that point, it's gonna be my wife's 30th, so I would like to stay married to her, so I will not be there.
I'll be more than, I will be at that and I'll be more than happy to represent for us.
Yeah.
Dooley, are you gonna be at the meeting?
Uh, the meeting, yes, for that Monday, if you want to go.
The delegates, yeah, I'll go, yeah.
Okay, so I will.
Dooley, he's gonna let me take that for him.
All right, I will, and really, I'm not sure, we have a list of four or five, I'm trying to remember.
Four.
Four. You know, I would highlight the top two and then just mention three and four, because you get two minutes per and I don't want us not making our case on our top two items.
You can put together a script beforehand together and that way.
I'll be more than happy to sit down and read through it.
There's no surprises and we're prepared.
Okay, so in the spirit of Kevin, I'll make a motion that we designate Ms. Abear to represent the city of Destin at the delegation meeting on the 15th.
And I will second that.
All right, got a motion and a second, not seeing any further.
No.
No, you can go, I'm speaking, I'll be.
Yeah, yeah, by all means, more the merrier.
Yeah, please be there.
Yep, all right, with that, I'll call the vote. Councilwoman Abear to represent us at the delegation.
Sandy, you need to be there.
Yeah.
Oh, I'll be there. Someone's gonna ask Pat from Warner.
It's a side ask.
As a citizen.
Yeah.
Rodney, did you get switched off?
They went to sleep.
It never waited to vote, except.
Ooh, alright, there we go. I just have it so moved, anything else? Alright, thank you.
Just mayor, one just announcement, just wanted to.
God, I'm trying to make it nine o'clock.
Okay, we'll, just real quick, short-term registration for condos, just wanted to let you know that.
Oh, yeah.
To date, we have collected one-hundred-and-five-thousand dollars, so we've got eight-hundred-and-forty-four that have registered and paid, and we have that many in the queue to pay, and keep in mind, those are only paying one-fourth of a year, so you can extrapolate that out, times four, so we'd be making, you know, eight-hundred-thousand bucks on those that are registered and move forward, so we, our staff is doing a great job of getting those rounded up and making some progress there, so just wanted to give you an update on that.
That doesn't mean we need to spend that money right away, does it?
That money, that money is to fund the registration program that you have set up.
Fire guy, alright.
Alright, real quick, make sure you get your nine o'clock, John Stevens, forty-two-five Union Trail, sounds like parking was a big topic tonight, I know Mr. Braden talked about the parking, parking studies and how they're bad, shared parking is bad also, so I hope you guys are gonna be talking about shared parking too down the line, that's all I got, thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Thanks, John.
Alright, hey, as long as you want, you wanna endure all that?
No, no, you guys have been here longer.
No, we appreciate you being here.
And, no, we don't want whatever it was you were talking about, timing happened, things happened.
Almost nine hours, Ward Kelly, Commissioner.
I've learned, probably.
Just push that button real quick.
Which one?
The gray one?
Gray one?
Yep, there you go.
Learned from Councilman Destin that you guys have not voted, which is good.
And we won.
Great, that'd be awesome, we, they opened Stallman just before I moved in, to, I lived in the greenhouse right there at Ridgewood Manor, and we, we had to move, because I had two young kids, and we had, we had to deal with the traffic, and we, we were able to get the speed bumps put in there, which caused a lot of problems initially, because people weren't knowing about the speed bumps, and created a few problems, but now that people have learned them, you know, still a three-way street, and I, I guess it's gonna be there, but we'd like to keep the nine kids, wait a minute, seven, sorry, seven kids in our neighborhood, keep them, we try to keep them in the yards, but they go out in the street, and I do not want another incident or problem with those kids themselves, and to make it into cul-de-sac, it's very simple, make it very easy, now nobody'll get lost going to Pine Street, 'cause Pine Street will be on the west side, and, yep, and my street would be Blue, Blue Mile and Court, we had a hundred percent approval with three houses.
Yep.
Which I said that to you as well.
Yep.
And, you know, the idea to spend seven-hundred-thousand dollars for that portion of that strip, you're gonna have to rip out the trees, you're gonna have to do all the work, there's, I mean, it's gonna be close to a million, I just don't see how we need to be doing that, but anyway, thank you, guys, for your attention, and please don't vote on that part of it.
I don't think it makes any sense.
Thank you.
So is he trying to make one long street, but the staff said no, is that what you're saying?
No, they're saying yes.
The mobility plan has Forest or Pine connecting.
Right. Well, they said it's.
So, can we change the mobility plan, or? Or is that a legal thing? That'd be like a legal thing, now that it impacted the fees, the higher, the more needs that we had in our mobility, our fee, the more justification we had for, unfortunately, that last hotel barely getting by with the three-point-eight, point-nine million dollars that they would have to pay to fund those kind of mobility projects, so, I don't know if there's a little, what was going on, but yeah, I don't know if we, Kim, do we know if we can now?
We can look at that and see, we can see how significant that is, let us take a look at it.
Yeah, 'cause there's a couple that I know were almost a hundred percent, why are we doing this, no one wants it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It looks good on paper.
Maybe, yeah.
We're not.
Alright, thank you, guys, Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas, thank you for being here.
Everything is fun, isn't it?
Yeah, alright, anyone else? Seeing none, adjourn.